Good morning, everyone. Welcome to sunny White Plains. Even warmer and sunny in Buffalo today, but we'll take what White Plains is offering nonetheless. Summer is officially here and as always pleased to spend some time this morning with my fellow trustees, Justin and the team. So with me today, B Gonzalez, Cecily Morris, Laurie Wheelock, Michael Cusick, Dennis Trainer, Louis Warren will be joining us shortly remotely. Justin and selected members of his leadership team here to help us kick things off. I'm John Colwell, who's always pleased to chair this steer gathering. The meeting has been duly scheduled as required by opening open meetings law, and hence I'm pleased to call this joint session to order. Everyone's hopefully had an opportunity to review the agenda that was presented unless there's thoughts or perspectives on additions or deletions. I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. B, thank you very much. Laurie, second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We've all had a chance to hopefully look at the contractor list. I've seen some emails back and forth confirming conflicts or lack thereof. I'm assuming there's no changes. If there are, please so advise. Well, we have a full agenda and we'll have some great presentations coming up and some really good discussion to go along with that as we typically do. We're going to start with a brief executive session. We'll do our best to minimize the time away, but to do so, I'd ask for a motion to conduct such a session in accordance with Section 105 of the Public Officers Law. Michael, thank you. Dennis, second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We will adjourn to executive session and be back with all of you shortly. Thank you very much. All right, welcome back, everyone. We've obviously rounded out the crowd and welcome to all of us joining us post exec session. I could ask for a motion to resume the meeting in open session. Michael, thank you. Laurie, second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. There's always no votes were taken. It's set up front, but good, good agenda today. Good presentations and interactive discussion reflective of the full agenda we have as an organization in these challenging and interesting and exciting times. So we will touch all the typical bases from strategy to ops to finance to risk. I got a finance committee report on the backend, but to kick us off as per usual, pleased to introduce our president and CEO, Justin Driscoll.
Thank you, Chairman. Morning, everyone. Morning, trustees, NIPA colleagues, members of the public. Great to be with you here today. Today, we started in the last few meetings to develop themes around some of the presentations across the various officers reports. So today, we're going to be focusing on the theme of critical infrastructure. And we have an external speaker, Rob Lee from Dragos, our partner in cybersecurity, who will speak to us shortly. But as you know, we're a big owner and operator of critical infrastructure. It's key to our, key to our mandate, our mission, our responsibilities to the people of the state and to the electricity sector. So, you know, as we, as we sort of think about, and we've talked to you about this and actually touched on it a little bit at our, at the trustee training session we had with you recently. But, you know, you think about the way that the system historically has worked. And so basically, the past has been somewhat, somewhat currently, but the system has been more of a sort of hub and spoke type of electricity system where the power plant, you know, is sort of in the center and generates power and flows out to various load or users of that, of that power. In the future, what we're looking at is more of a sort of spider web approach. When we move toward what we're calling a decentralized grid with a lot of power generation being localized, you're looking at more, less pressure on the grid because users will have, have some resilience and some power generation onsite. So power not, not as reliant on the overall grid. That's sort of where, where the system is heading. So as we see with our customer base, with the big governmental customers that we have, that, that's set up actually quite nicely for this type of structure. Do you have distributed resources on their property, potentially solar panels, electrified fleet, power transfers going in both directions, being able to manage your own power usage and what's called demand response, all these things coming together to provide a level of resiliency to the, to the user. And so with our customers like the city of New York and the MTA and the Port Authority and NICA, college campuses, office buildings, these are, these are facilities that set up well for potential usage of those decentralized systems. So it's very much top of mind for us. And as we talked to you a little bit about at the, at the training session when we were discussing market trends and, and where, where the industry is headed, this is certainly, I think, a sweet spot for NIPA. So as the, as we talk to customers about these, what they call virtual power plants, we think we're very well, very well positioned there. So in terms of the various officer reports that you'll hear today, Joe Kessler's CEO report will be an update on our Smart Path Connect Transmission Project in the North Country. Alexis's Risk Report will focus on her May spotlight on critical infrastructure risk. Vanilla will talk to us about NIPA Renewables and the successful RFQ as we, as we look to move into generation of renewable assets. And, and one with Adam's CFO Report, which will include information on our capital plan. As I mentioned, we'll, we'll hear from Rob Lee from Dragos. But as I've been doing the last few meetings, I want to just give a brief update on where we are with, with our, what we call our expanded authority that came out of the last year's legislative session. So today, we're going to focus on three of the items. NIPA Renewables, which will be a consistent, a consistent item that we report on every meeting. The workforce training piece, we have an item that we talked about at, at Finance with you that's on the finance report agenda today. So talk a little bit about workforce training. And then the decarbonization leadership program, which we called DL, DL 15. So on the, on the NIPA Renewables front, you know, we get a lot of questions about what's going on? What's the schedule? Where are, where are we? So what we thought we'd do is just put on one slide here, the, the plan for the remainder of this year. So we're kicking off already again, another conferral process. We did that last year, if you recall, when we filed a conferral report last year, which we were required to do within the first, first few months of the enactment. So we're going to kick that off again in 2024. That's going to be starting very soon. We will be finalizing our draft strategic plan and, and socializing that, which will kick off a public comment period that'll follow that. So that will be in the fall, we'll be hearing from the public. We'll hold two, at least two public hearings to take input from the public. We'll then file the 2024 conferral report. And then we'll come to you in January of next year with the strategic plan that will, that will be an outgrowth of our planning process plus whatever input we're getting from the public through the public hearing process. And we'll, we'll bring that to you in January of 2025. And that is required to be filed with the legislature on January 31 of 2025. So a lot going on. You'll hear more from Vanilla about-
And you expect the outcomes of that versus last year's process?
On the conferral piece?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think just, you know, we, we hear, the team will tell you, we hear regularly from stakeholders. There's an incredible amount of interest in, in what we're doing here. So we hear from new stakeholders all the time. And then we'll hear from stakeholders that we engaged with last year with new input, you know, new ideas, new suggestions, questions. So I think it'll be, it'll look a lot like last year's conferral report, but it'll have additional information in it and that'll all, you know, feed into our decision making around what ends up in that final strategic plan that we come, that we come to you with in, at our, at our January meeting. But there'll be plenty of opportunity for us to work with you on this along the way in the fall. And so just wanted to put up here the, the schedule because we do get, we do get a lot of questions around it. So I wanted to make sure that that, you know, that was very clear.
And the questions we get are relative to what? I mean, there's, what, is there confusion? I mean, this seems fairly straightforward and so-
I think there's anticipation.
Help us understand the question.
I'd say there's a lot of anticipation around when are we going to get started? And, you know, what, when are, when are folks going to actually see projects in development? And so part of this is, is to look back to the legislation and what was, what was actually embodied in the enactment, which calls for this strategic plan in 2024. So that folks know that that's what we're doing. We're very, we're very actively, you know, engaged in, in that process. And, and we're looking to hit the ground running in 2025 as the law requires. So that, if there would be one takeaway that we'd like to have from this, it's that we're, we're very busy and very hard at work and we're on schedule, if not ahead of schedule in some ways, in terms of the filing of our reach petition, which went in early and all. And, and, and we'll be sharing information in the fall with public and looking for their input.
And we want to say intentional and deliberate. We're not, not a fire ready aim organization.
Correct.
Following a good process, due process, inclusive outreach, build partnerships and all the rest of that so that we ensure in nine months, we create very positive and sustainable and scalable momentum, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
So, so that's, that's the update on NIPA Renewables.
And Justin.
On the workforce training. Yes. Hey, Louis.
Hi, if you don't mind me asking a quick question. Good morning. By the way, I don't, I don't think our, our technology colleagues are doing me any favor. Looks like favors. It looks like I'm 12 feet tall on this, on the screen here.
Go ahead, Louis. Go ahead, Louis.
So, so a question about process. In terms of engaging the legislature in the conferral process, do we, do we update them on a regular basis or, 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 you know, do we share our conclusions with the relevant committees, et cetera? Just wanted to get a few comments around that part of the conferral process, Justin.
Yep. So we've heard directly from staff, from members of the legislature. And we've also proactively reached out and briefed members of the legislature, particularly those involved in the critical committees, such as the Energy Committee and so forth. So we are, we are engaged with them and I, I expect that they'll be very involved, you know, in the process, particularly when we open up the comment period in the, in the fall.
Wonderful. So, so as, as, as we moved towards the fall, feel free to share with our board here in, you know, any two or three page executive summary of our conferral document that, that we can also, you know, add to the NIPA voice with respect to our legislature.
Absolutely. And I know my new trustee, Cusick, had asked previously for, for us to develop some things because I know that the trustees get a lot of questions on this as well. So we're, we're working on that and we'll provide something to you along those lines so that you kept up to speed. And we can incorporate, we can incorporate a piece of this too into the monthly trustee report that we provide, if that would be, would be helpful. So the next update is on the workforce training. I don't want to repeat what we talked about at Finance, but just a reminder that in the, in the, in the Finance Committee Report today, you'll be asked to approve the recommendation of the Finance Committee for our first rollout of the workforce training initiative. If you'll recall, this is the up to $25 million commitment that we, that was incorporated into the law last year for us to support the transition to the clean energy workforce of the future. So we were working as, as we were required to do in the law. We're working with the State Department of Labor. As you know, we executed an MOU with them and now we're coming to you with our first sort of joint, joint projects. So I'm very excited. Department of Labor is here. They have two pieces, totally $9 million workforce training initiative where apprentice, some apprentice programs and workforce training for the transition of work, the workforce from, you know, the current, current, you know, fossil plants to the clean energy workforce of the future. Another DOL support services. And I, one of the things that we talked to you about this, we're finding is so critical to this work is the, the wraparound services that come with some of the programs so that people can actually, you know, get to, get to these training sessions and get to classes. And, and so there's, that's a big piece of this. And then on the NIPA side, we talked to you a little bit about the Clean Energy Workforce Training Initiative and then also commitment to Say Yes Buffalo. And one of the nice things about the Say Yes Buffalo and some of these other programs is that not only is training provided, but if you're in these programs, there's also sometimes a commitment to actually get hired by the, by the entity that's training you, which is a key, key element of all this. So, so $11.6 million. And we're already thinking about what we're going to come back to you in July with. We have another potential program that we'll, will come to you in July with. So this will be a, this will be a regular thing, I think, as we go forward with this. But happy to kick this off for the first time. And the partnership with the Department of Labor has been great. Obviously, they've been at this for, for a while. They're, they're more, they're statewide and their, and their sort of view and, and activities. We're focusing more on areas around our plants and where we have physical assets, at least initially. So I think it's going to be a really good collaboration and it's, it's such important work. Finally, on the, the DL 15, this is the, the energy master plans for 15 of the largest state facility emitters. And so we're working very hard on rolling that out. We've, we've, substantial work is already underway at, at the campuses in terms of both planning and project execution. And, you know, the lot of these, all these entities are already, have already been thinking about how they're going to transition their operations. So our work, we view our, our work as being additive to what, what they're already doing. One area of focus, which trustee trainer you may be interested in is there's, there's a big interest in these thermal energy networks. And so a lot of the planning will be looking for potential for thermal energy networks to be constructed, some of these, some of the facilities that we deal with. Like I said earlier, these big customer, big footprint customers, if you will, can set up very nicely potentially for thermal energy networks, which, which are a big focus now. So, so that's it on, on the update for now. But before I introduce Rob, I think I'll stop there and see if there are any, any, any additional questions on any of that.
We're good. Yeah.
Laurie. So thank you, Justin, and thank you to the team. Just to start going back to the Department of Labor piece, you know, we did talk about this at Finance, but I think just again, highlight and elevate the wraparound services is huge. That's really exciting that it's going to happen at NIPA, but also at Department of Labor for, you know, childcare, you know, travel costs, things of that nature are really important. So just wanted to highlight that again and thank you all for prioritizing that. That's huge. You know, we didn't really get too much into it because we're focusing on the three pieces. The NIPA Reach, obviously the comments were due last month. And I know I've been reading them and really excited to see that process go. So, you know, happy to keep up to date with you all on what that process is looking like. And then lastly, with the conferral process, you know, the public hearings, I think, will be a really big piece. Just to flag, I think, you know, making sure that we cover as much of the state as possible. And there's just so many details that go into the planning. You know, it might be October and November, which seems a lifeline away. But, you know, accessible spaces, virtual options, language access, regionality. It's a, it's a whole process. And so knowing that our trustees are regional as well, I, you know, don't want to speak for all of us, but would be happy to keep in touch just to make sure that we are hitting that statewide footprint.
No, that's great. That's great advice. Thank you. And we'll, we'll work closely with you on that as we roll, as we roll that out. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to introduce our guest speaker today, Rob Lee. Rob's the CEO and co-founder of Dragos, a global cybersecurity technology leader for industrial control systems and operational technology environments. He's a recognized authority in the industrial cyber, cybersecurity community. In that capacity, he serves as the vice chair of the Electricity Advisory Committee of the Department of Energy, Grid Resilience for National Security Subcommittee. And he's an advisor to national leaders on policy issues related to critical, critical infrastructure, cyber threats. And he's testified before the U.S. House of Representatives Committee on Energy and Commerce Subcommittee on Oversight and Investigations and the U.S. Senate Energy Natural Resources Committee. And Rob and, Rob and NIPA are no strangers. We've been working very closely with Rob and his team at Dragos. And he's helped us analyze the evolving threat landscape of IT and OT environments, enhancing regulatory compliance readiness and promoting collective community defense for the electric sector. And I know we've talked to you about the work that we're doing with our munis and co-ops on what we call cyber hygiene and improving their cyber activities. And Rob's work has been really critical to that, to that work that we're doing on behalf of the munis. So, so with that, I'd like to introduce Rob Lee and turn it over to him.
All right. Well, thank you so much for the time and attention today and allow me to come speak for you. So I really want to paint a picture on what that OT stuff is. And I'll kind of highlight that and where we are taking our electric system. I think Justin hit it really nicely at the beginning with, we sort of used to be more hub and spoke and now we're more spider-like. But I'll, I'll paint a picture today of where our electric system was, where it's going and what that means in terms of the threats that it faces. And I think for a lot of folks, we hear about cyber a lot. Sometimes it can be very high level, but I'll try to make it a little bit more tangible on what you are currently facing, the electric system today. And quite frankly, why a lot of government folks around the world are getting freaked out and kind of what they're seeing and why are they putting so much attention on it? So let's, let's talk about where we were as a system, which I think again, will paint the picture quite nicely. So at one point in time, it wasn't just hub and spoke. It was heterogeneous. All right. And by, by that, I mean that our infrastructure was very different site to site. The site at the Hoover Dam was very different than the site at Roosevelt Dam. The infrastructure that we use to generate power in the United States was very different than the infrastructure used to generate power in Sydney, Australia. When you look at the control systems, and so that OT term, let me define it real quick. It's really information technology systems, but coupled with physics. So we might have a laptop, but now it's hooked up to a controller that might also have a physical process to spin a turbine or be able to open a digital relay and electric substation. It's physics plus all the IT stuff is really what we mean when we say OT. And we had that, again, the computing systems, the software, even the physical profile was not only different between the generation assets I just mentioned, but it had almost nothing in common between a carbon cracker and an oil refinery in De Mom, Saudi Arabia. It was just very heterogeneous, site by site by site, very, very different. And what that meant was that a lot of the knowledge for how to operate those assets was in your company because you had to have it. You had to develop it. You had an operator that worked at that site, her daddy worked at that site for 30 years, her granddaddy worked at that site for 30 years. You had a lot of internal knowledge of those operational assets, that critical part of critical infrastructure, you knew it best. So when something happened, we had this skill set of root cause analysis. We knew how to go figure it out. What took down? What took down the site? What happened? What went wrong? It wasn't okay just to recover a site. You had to know what went wrong to recover it safely, to make sure that lives in the community were protected when you actually took care of your infrastructure. That skill of root cause analysis was really good, but the downside of heterogeneous environments was cost. The ability to really run your own asset very uniquely with proprietary technology stacks, proprietary software, it was very costly. The vendors, the original equipment manufacturers, couldn't maintain that globally. So you started seeing consolidation. You started seeing original equipment manufacturers buy up local integrators, other product companies getting consolidated into one. We tried to move the world to more homogenous infrastructure. With the same software running in a gas turbine control system in Houston, Texas, so the same software running the one in De Mom, Riyadh, or De Mom, Saudi Arabia now. And that heterogeneous to homogenous curve meant that you lost the ability to do root cause analysis for the most part in this highly complex system. So not just hub and spoke to spider, I think that's appropriate. But even one layer down, we went from non-digital kind of understood assets to highly complex systems of systems that are connected in ways we never anticipated and very, very digital and now sharing a lot of commonality. So let's give a case study, if you will, to show what that means. We had an individual power producer somewhere in the United States. And so all they do is generate electricity, right, put onto the electric system. And they had a very heterogeneous system and they went through an upgrade where they started upgrading the control environments to get to this new digital system, higher performance, better costs, more reliable electricity, power generation, all the good things you can expect. But they ended up taking down the facility for maintenance. So they shut down the gas turbine control systems, rolled out the trucks in the morning and started to get to work. And the gas turbine control system came back online on its own, which is, to my understanding, has ever happened in the history of gas turbine control systems. They don't wake up in the morning and say, hey, I just want to activate. That's a very dangerous process. And so they were rightfully worried. They're rightfully trying to figure out what happened. And these operations staff who had all the expertise in the world did not understand how to get root cause analysis now on this highly complex, highly homogenous type system. Say calling their vendors, calling the contractors, trying to figure out what's going on, couldn't get there, thought maybe it's one of those cyber things we keep hearing about. Actually, they called their IT staff, said, hey, we might have one of these cyber attacks. I don't know, but the gas turbine control system has come back on its own. That's worrisome. We can't figure out why. Environment's safe right now, but we don't know what happens. We gotta, we gotta address that. So their IT folks ended up calling us to do instant response. We do a lot of the instant response cases around the community. Rolled in our technology, started looking, didn't see anything cyber-y about it. But one of our really smart instant responders, she noticed that the system had been upgraded recently and she went over to the human machine interface, which is this basically Windows system that allows you to interact with the control environment, like interactive physics. And she looked at it and said, hey, can I put any forensic tools on this to try to figure out what's going on? I think something's happening on this system. And they said, no, you can't because of the regulations. The NERCIP regulation is not allowed you to mess with that system. Okay. But I can use any sort of native tools that are already on it, right? Anything on the Windows system I can use. They're like, yeah, go for it. And so she pulled up Windows Paint. And I've dealt with a lot of instant response cases before. I dealt with the Ukraine case. I led the OT portion of pipeline. I've done a lot of cases, never used Windows Paint in an instant response case. Okay. So she pulls it up and says, hey, this is going to take a minute. Why don't we all go to lunch? Environment's safe. We need a couple hours. And so they said, okay. Everybody rolled out, went to lunch, came back a couple hours later and there was black blotches on the screen on Windows Paint. And she, she'd figured it out. And what was happening is the upgrade had also took it to a touchscreen HMI, touchscreen human machine interface that was overly pressurized and overly bright and moths, bugs breaking in the building and hitting the screen when people weren't around and just happened to hit the right location on a maintenance screen to activate a control loop that activated the gas turbine control system. Okay? So we will talk about Russia, China, Iran, all this stuff. But I think it's really important, as I talk to boards around the community, to understand that as we've demanded more out of our electric system, we've had to go far more digital, far more complex and homogenous to the point that we also have now to include moths in our threat system. Okay? We have an environment where root cause analysis is difficult. So we're going to talk about the cyber stuff today. But please understand as trustees that something could happen at NIPA without the right investments. It's not about how fast we get up and running. It's you may not know. You may have a plant go down or a substation go down and not know, was it a cyber attack or not? And that lack of knowledge of what took place impedes your ability to respond, calling government resources, calling vendors, calling the operators. If you don't know what happened, you are not resilient. Okay? And that is happening everywhere. That's not a NIPA problem. As mentioned, break, 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 no commercial kind of discussions. I sit on the DOE side of the house as well. And we are pushing, me not, you know, not me personally, but the D O E is pushing our electric system operators to operate the system in a way that was never designed. And we're happy to do anything as an electric community. Energy neutral. I don't really care where you generate your electricity from. I don't have a political opinion about it, but I like resilience. And we push it all in one direction. Sometimes we're pushing our system to defy the laws of physics. And to do that, we're dealing with a lot of complexity, a lot of automation to get there. So you have a resilience problem that's happening across the country right now while we're asking more and more of our electric system, then you overlay the cyber threat. So it's not cyber threats are the number one issue. It's as we become more complex, as we become more automated, the impact of cyber is far more than it used to be. Okay. So let's talk about sort of that heterogeneous to homogeneous from a threat perspective. So I started my career in the U S Air Force, spent most of my time over the National Security Agency, built out the U S government's mission, looking at states breaking into infrastructure sites around the world. But for a portion of my time, I got to be on the offense doing stuff to others. And let me walk you through hypothetical data sets of what that would look like in our world. So from a heterogeneous system, military commander comes in and says, hey, Rob, need you to be able to take down this asset somewhere in the world, their operations environments to support this military operation. So, okay. And he's asking the same of pilots and tank commanders and everyone else. He's looking for a package. Hey, who has the options? Who can give us the best package to take into combat? Okay. And he comes to me and says, what do you need? Well, boss, I'm, I'm going to need about 18 months, a team of 13 people and about 30 million bucks to create you a digital capability to go take down that substation environment. That's okay. How often can we use it? Once. Well, can we use it at other sites too? Nope. It's specific. The more physical destruction, the more disruption you want to make in a heterogeneous environment, the more specific it's got to be to that site. That's heterogeneous. It's got to be custom to that site. Okay. So one-time use capability in 18 months, 30 million bucks. Okay. Turns to the pilot. Hey, what can you do? Well, I, I can be sober in six hours and take it down. That's going to win. Okay. And every military conflict around the world, that pilot or that tank commander wins out over cyber capabilities every day. So what we used to see with cyber anything and digital capabilities on the O T portion, on our operations technology portion, used to be the work of intelligence agencies. If they really had a very strategic target that the military wasn't supposed to get involved in, they would do offense. But for the most part, we saw espionage and sort of preparation of the battlefield, they would say, across our infrastructure. And that's been going on for the last 15 years easily. Now let's go to the homogeneous world. Now I can go to that same military commander and say, hey, boss, if you give me 18 months, team of 13 people, $30 million, I can create you a capability to go after that infrastructure site. This is okay. How often can you use it? Well, whenever you want, as many times as you want, over and over again. Well, what type of sites? Any, any type of these industrial sites, because they're all using same underlying technologies and implementations. And I can have that ready for whenever you want against any capability, any target, anywhere in the world, used over and over again. Now the military commander is swiping a credit card to get that kind of capability, like a SCUD missile coming off is three times more expensive. That's what's happening. And we've seen that. We've seen evidence of that. In 2022, we were involved in uncovering such a capability that was developed by a state actor. You could not guess and be wrong in the context of the political environment. But a state actor developed a capability called Pipe Dream. Doesn't really matter for, for the technical details of it. But it can be leveraged at any different industrial environment around the world, from a substation to a servo motor on an unmanned aerial vehicle. And it can do disruption. And if the physical environment will allow it, destruction. That was developed and they picked out 13 key targets across the United States in the electric and natural gas sectors to be prepared for conflict scenario. That's the world to which we live in today, under a homogeneous environment. Now let's look at sort of where the government's getting worried. 95%, it's not a made up number, even though it's round, it sounds it, even from Alabama, I can do a little bit of math, but 95% of all the budgets in cybersecurity industry and all the standards and all the work and all the regulation go towards the enterprise I T side of these companies. Less than 5% of resources on average from a company go to the operational technology side, the side where you generate revenue, the side where you have community impact, the side where you're actually doing the critical part of critical infrastructure. That is where a lot of governments are starting to freak out. It wasn't done intentionally. It's not like asset owners and operators were asleep at the wheel. It was, these used to be very analog, disconnected heterogeneous systems. Now we've taken them very complex, very homogeneous, very connected. At the same time, their adversaries are paying attention to that. Now governments are going, oh, oh, we need to encourage people to do differently. Or if we think we're at a time, regulate them to do differently. That is the environment that we're facing where we have the inability, not only to get root cause analysis, but honestly, the inability, inability, a lot of times even see into those environments and figure out what's going on. That is going to be impactful, not only from a cyber threat perspective, but just your ability to actually operate your asset from a non-cyber perspective. So let's look at another case where folks are a little bit worried. This one you may have heard about in the public news is they called it Volt Typhoon, but it was essentially the Chinese government picking out electric targets across the United States. And it doesn't take a whole lot of leap of logic to talk about the fact that China and Taiwan is a current hotbed situation. And there's a lot of belief in the U S government that China will make a move up Taiwan at some point. And of course, there's a China sort of view that the U S will get involved or may want to get involved in that conflict. As a result, a number of utilities across the United States were targeted, and it wasn't like we used to have. Okay. China going after electric systems in the United States, again, 15, 20 years consistent. Used to though, it'd be how do I get into the I T networks? How do I target just a variety of electric companies and see what I have? Now in this latest campaign, the one that the FBI director is talking about, the one that the National Security Director is talking about, the reason they're worried is it was specific strategic electric companies across the United States. And it was trying to get into that operations technology side of the house. And so there's been the boogeyman of the industry for a long time where government will come out and say, oh, there's embedded capabilities, weapons laid in the electric system, and they're going to go off. And every electric asset owner would be like, great, where are they? Show me. I'll fix it. We're a community of engineers and operators. You tell us where the problem is and we'll fix it. And government wasn't able to provide that. And so a lot of folks have thought about hype and fear and like, maybe some of this is a little scaremongering. Lately, what they're referring to is actually, actually appropriately concerning to have strategic targeting of the right locations, the right parts of those environments to get into position to be able to take down infrastructure if necessary, at the same time that we've chased digital, digitization, that homogeneous curve, and have lost some of that root cause analysis inside our infrastructure. So that's where you're faced today. Now, the good news is, the stuff that can make you hopefully not have the scary presentation. And the good news is the basics and the fundamentals are well-known and they work. When you invest in those fundamentals, they work. So we did an instant response case at a midsize public power company. Okay. And it was that Volt Typhoon work. So Chinese government, like an A team in that Chinese government, so an A player team in the Chinese government, targeting this company. And they were trying to get into the operations technology side. They compromised the I T portion of networks. Because when we deployed our tech and started looking around, we, we caught them and found that they had been there for about 300 days, which sounds bad. And you know, you want to catch them sooner than 300 days, but that's probably about average and what you could expect at most companies. It should be a couple of minutes, but it's about 300 days right now. And what we found is for 300 days, they were trying to get into the operations side of that company and failing. She had an A player team, China, state government, trying to get into the operations side of this company and failing to do so, not because of blockchain and A I and whatever else, but because they had some good staff that were well-trained, that put the fundamentals in place of things like network segmentation, firewalling, and the kind of cybersecurity hygiene practices that are being encouraged at your co-ops and munis as well through NIPA. They put that stuff in place. And they were going through the next step of the journey to get detection and response, to get visibility into these environments. And that's when they saw what was happening. And we don't want to give more than 300 days to, to try. But a midsize electric company in this country doing the basics for a pushback on a A player team and a state actor, that's impressive. That's awesome. That should fill us all with an opportunity of this can be done. A lot of times folks come out and go, wow, can't be done. China, Russia, Iran, whatever really want us, they'll get us. And that is ridiculous. I've been on both offense and defense. It's entirely not accurate at all. I get the sentiment. But really that sentiment is put out there by C S Os or chief information security officers at compromise companies who want to keep their job. It is not, oh my gosh, this was totally basic stuff that can be done. It was, oh my gosh, they're so advanced. I had no chance of winning, right? There's, there's a sort of competing bias there. And the reality is you can do it. Defense is entirely doable. And from what I've seen from the NIPA team so far is they're on the right path. They've invested in some things and some efforts even ahead of their peers. So the trustees should be really proud of this security efforts and the resilience efforts at NIPA. I go to a lot of companies, get invited to a lot of board meetings. I will tell you the risk of it. And Justin's very, very kind and invite me in. The risk of it is I'm a very transparent broker. I've gone into companies before and be like, you are really in a bad place. You need to fix it. I don't just come in and go, you're great and wonderful because I get to leave at the end of the day. And I've got three kids that depend on this electric system. So I want to have the same kind of discussion with you that I have everyone else. So I'll tell you, you've got a good team. You've got a really well-understood organization with a really good interactions between operations staff as well as the security, which is not always common. Sometimes it's a little bit hurting cats when you have folks that are in charge of trying to keep the asset running at the same time that somebody's trying to come in and do something to it. So you've got good culture here. You've got good people. You've got good processes. I would tell you, you're kind of at the starting place of that journey. So when they come to you and go, we need to do more, it's not because we didn't know to do it before, it's because our system is changing. That system is changing at the same time that that threat landscape is changing. That's why we're seeing those requests of let's go do more. But I would encourage you to keep ahead of it. Because here's the, the other threat to the system we don't always talk about, regulation. And I love our federal partners, loving to death. They're good people. But at the same time, people are worried. And if you're seeing what we're seeing on the threat landscape side, and you're seeing companies that don't have the basics of visibility and understanding their environment, you're going, hey, my national security job is to take care of my constituents and we're going to regulate. The problem with regulation is, is not all regulation is bad, but the problem with cybersecurity regulation at times is it's written for auditors. It's written to be audited. But that cybersecurity regulation doesn't leave a lot of innovation for companies to figure out, what do we need to actually do to protect against these threats? A regulation is written at one point in time against one known of the threat landscape. It can take two, three, four years to update and adversaries don't wait two, three, four years to innovate. Okay. So I'm, I think there should be baseline regulations. I work on a lot of them. I like the work that FERC does for the most part as an example. But at the same time, we need to realize we've got to have flexibility. And, and so governments are getting scared and they're activating that regulation button a little bit more than the innovation and partnering button. The way to change that, not just as the trustees with your voices as well, but the way to change that is to highlight the wins. If we're only ever highlighting the Volt Typhoons compromising folks, if we're only ever highlighting the pipe dreams that are scaring the heck out of everyone understandably. And we don't highlight the midsize electric company, what they're doing. We don't highlight the community defense work that's taken place at NIPA and munis and the co-op. We don't highlight those things. It looks so bad. It looks like we're all going to lose. You might as well regulate and try. But if you highlight that the things can be done and that basics and foundations and fundamentals can win, policymakers are happy to focus on other challenges because they got plenty of them. Okay. So I spend a lot of time in Senate, a lot of time in Congress. I don't always recommend it, but they are good people at times. And I do joke sometimes that a lot of what we see on TV is the W W E version of policymaking behind the scenes are usually collaborating a lot more than I think people realize. But they are focused on O T right now. I used to have conversations with them and try to explain what O T is. Now we're having O T specific hearings. I did one four months ago, I think it was O T specific cybersecurity for the water sector. There is a higher level of literacy in the policy scenes these days on this topic. And NIPA stands in a good place to lead some of those conversations if it continues to invest in them at the same time focusing again on those industrial control systems, O T, whatever. I T matters as well. We, we still want to do our enterprise I T environments. But again, recognize where the critical part of your critical infrastructure is. So in, in closing, I've tried to leave a good, you know, 15, 20 minutes or so for questions because I'm hoping there's going to be interaction. If there's not, I'll just start randomly calling the trustees because again, I get to leave. But if we look at where we were as a community, heterogeneous analog kind of systems, where we are now, highly digital, highly connected, homogeneous systems, the cybersecurity efforts that we can do not only benefit us against cyber threats, but can also benefit us with just the basics of understanding of our systems, recover them from non-cyber incidents. And you've got a very active threat landscape that is not like I was briefing five, 10 years ago. We are now getting to the point where folks are happy to do disruption, are happy to do disruption, and they know there's no consequence. In 2015, the first ever cyber attack took down electric power in Ukraine. I got to lead that investigation, came back, briefed the president. They prepared a Rose Garden speech and they pulled it back because there's a view that American public wouldn't really care about what happened in Ukraine. By doing that, all you sent in terms of a signal to the adversary is there's no consequence. 2016, it happened again, different administrations. This isn't a political topic. Different administration, same kind of briefing. Hey, it happened again. Same kind of getting prepared, going, nah, never mind, pulled it back. Time and time and time again, we've seen cases where nobody said anything. 2017, I dealt with an investigation in Saudi Arabia where an adversary targeted safety systems in a petrochemical environment. Safety systems are only there to protect people. That's it. They targeted that and tried to kill about 30 to 60 people that day. They messed up. Even the adversary makes mistakes and they only cost the company $300 million in downtime. Luckily, no life was lost that day though. We are seeing time and time again, an escalation of what the adversaries are willing to do. They've got the capabilities, but the intent piece is getting more and more. And there's no red lines. There's no deterrence discussion. We had a case in the United States where there was that same adversary and they targeted a petrochemical facility. And we had to brief the White House on there may be loss of human life on U S soil from a foreign state. And the thing that came back from the Director of National Intelligence Office was how many? Like, what do you mean? How many deaths? It's like, I don't know, like 20 or 30 at this site. It's too small, like too small. What are you talking about? And the view was, look, we don't want any loss of life. But the problem is, if there's no loss of life, we can go to sanctions. But if you want military deterrence or anything else, it's got to be significant enough to rally the public. There's this gray area of 20, 30 lives lost, but nobody cares. There's not anything that we can do that's enough for either side of this conversation. Our adversaries are well-understanding of those gray lines. And when it comes to our local communities, 20 and 30 deaths, that's impactful. Okay. So what we're doing and what we're talking about in cybersecurity with an ever-changing system isn't about risk reduction. Okay. That's an important topic too. The risk committee is going to do some good work here in a minute. It's an important topic. You're talking about providing essential services to people that matter. And there's certain cybersecurity efforts that are in line with safety. Some aren't. We don't want you to gold plate the problem, but there are some efforts that are in line with safety and resilience, and those are the ones we want to highlight. And they typically happen as operation technology environments. So with that, I wanted to leave plenty of time for questions. I'm happy to answer anything O T, but I also happen to get into A I and all the various things you maybe get in head up with as trustees. But hopefully we can have a little bit of conversation around not only what's happening in O T, but maybe a little bit of what's happening in NIPA. Because I do think the work at the local co-ops and munis, that is just something that needs to be celebrated a lot more from what this team has been able to accomplish. So Chairman and trustees happy to take questions.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for coming and talking with us today. Much appreciated, obviously. An in-demand individual and thank you for creating this opportunity for us. Everybody can jump in here. Just play off your, your concluding comments on celebrating. I want you to agree with that, but I think there's always a reluctance to celebrate because you're waving the flag, hey, we beat the bad guys and we don't want to motivate the bad guys to say, yeah, that's what you think, you know, here we come. So talk to us about how you think you can constructively celebrate and better enable, you know, kind of create that rising tide of, of, of good stories and momentum and blocking and tackling that needs to be done at a more basic level.
Absolutely. So great question. First and foremost, it's hard for a power company to tell its own story. There is no good, like, and if you look in the New York Times, it's never going to be, thank you, company for keeping the lights on. Like, that's not the story. Yeah, there's no great job. And so I recognize that. Now, some of the trade associations, right? A B P A, the E E I's and the N R C A's of the world can help with that. But I do think it also deals a lot with trustees as well, going and taking these stories and being able to talk to legislation and legislators. A lot of policymakers get government agencies coming to them because they want budget. And that's appropriate. I'm not, I'm not trying to put that down. But the Critical Infrastructure Security Agency, as an example, doesn't stand in front of the Oversight Committee with Mission Success, all is done. They go, look at how bad things are. We need more budget to go fix this. Well-intentioned. But they're not highlighting those cases. But when policymakers are informed to be able to ask those questions, they go, well, what about, I heard about this case, or I heard about that, or what about these wins? It gets into record and written record matters a whole lot in terms of policymaking and being able to pass legislation. I also think it is incumbent on the community to talk, not necessarily about the wins against an adversary sometimes, but the wins against effort. And so going back to the NIPA effort, we, we were part of, so my firm was part of this 100-day effort that the White House pushed out and saying, let's get visibility into these sites. And, and of course, I don't run a nonprofit. And so I worked a lot of these companies, but we're happy to do it. But there's a charge. There's a fee. NIPA and really Vic and the staff here called me up and said, look, I know you guys do this for a fee elsewhere, but like these co-ops and munis in our area, they need help. And I know this is weird. I remember the phone call, Vic, but I know this is weird. But could you go do this for free at like a dozen of our co-ops and munis? And by the way, I know you don't even make the hardware, so it's going to cost you like 2 million bucks. I was like, so you're asking me not to get paid and to spend $2 million? I was like, so you're asking me not to get paid and to spend $2 million? Vic is like, yeah, man, it's the local community. And, and NIPA has been like a good customer and partner for a long time. I was like, okay, my head of sales thinks it was crazy, but, but I was like, okay, let's, let's go do this. And so NIPA used their position appropriately. And, and the relationships they had in the community, not to, not to force, but to encourage vendors to go be part of the bigger ecosystem as well. And to help those companies out. And I said, look, I can give you the technology. You guys got to actually go work with them, like spend the care and feeding, like it's going to be free like puppies, right? Like you're going to get the puppy, but there's going to be care and feeding that you guys got to be able to do. And, and they took that up. And so I wouldn't necessarily come out yourself and go, we fought off the adversary. I'd work with others to tell that story. But hey, look at what we're doing in our community and this is what right looks like. And this is what can be done and can scale against these threats. Those are stories that I think are really appropriate to tell. And there are some journalists you can work with as an example that aren't looking for the gotcha. You should do your research first, of course, but there are some, there are the trade associations, there are your legislators that can tell that kind of story in a way that I think encourages people to realize that there's innovation and insight more than just the fear and regulatory piece of it.
Curious on your takeaway from that exercise. Was it better than you anticipated, worse than you anticipated? How much of an eye opener was it?
Yeah. So we do a lot of work with co-op communities now. So off of part of what was happening with Vic, we launched what we called a community defense program, which was any electric, gas or water utility under a hundred million dollars can take our software for free forever. And to try to work with them. And what we found by and large was they were not even capable, most of them are not even capable to take that kind of free offering. And so I testified in Congress earlier this year and they were asking about free pen test services from the government and quantum encryption and all this. I was like, y'all, they need a firewall, like they need the basics. You're, you're out talking about next gen, whatever. And you've got an IT person being shared across six cooperatives, let alone, or six munis, let alone a security person, let alone the difference between IT and OT security. So it was very eye opening in the challenge, but I also think that was very much more a policy thing. If you look at the issue, it's not a lack of willingness. It really does come down to economics. And it's not in the economics of go pay for a vendor. It's in the economics of, and, and I don't want to get too much in the water industry here, but a lot of water municipalities are looked at as the cash cow in their community. They're able to go support the local projects, the school board, et cetera. The rate that you're paying on your utility bill for most companies and in no way actually reflects the risk that is in that, and they're not really paying for it. So I think some companies, large public power companies, investor-owned utilities, et cetera, can get it right. Even, even though they do still need to keep investing, but those smaller players, until we change the economics a bit, probably not going to have the effect that we'd like. You, you will need the NIPAs of the world in that community, but then of course it comes out of your own budget. You got to figure out how to talk to the public about that. We work with other companies, Salt River Project does the same kind of effort. I'm out and, and they're a great electric and water, large public power company. And they said, screw it. We're just going to go out and take care of these folks. You gotta, you got a whole lot of good people doing stuff that the system isn't supporting. And that's, that, that, that system and the policy around it needs to be adapted to create the type of budgets appropriate to go do this. But, but I understand a lot of public utility commissions and others on, we don't want to gold plate the problem. Nobody should be coming in pitching like quantum encryption and AI or whatever, but, but when we're talking about basics for essential services, I, I think that's a broader conversation that's got to happen in this country.
Others jumping in.
Could, could I follow up on just one? You, you mentioned AI. I'm just wondering, is, is, is that, has that been a game changer for, for the work that you do? Are you seeing some of that come into, into your work?
Yeah. So. Yeah. She, she told them to pull it back. Yeah, they, they pulled her voice back. Yeah. So AI is super impactful in a lot of ways and in other ways it's very hyped up. And here is the, the Alabama boy version of the two. If you are working on a problem set that has a lot of training data, because it's not about whose model is better or whose math is better, we know how to do math. It's who has the training data. So if you've got a lot of training data on a problem that is predictable, then AI is useful at finding the patterns and the ways around it that human analysts aren't going to be able to be quick enough on. So when you look at the electric system of the future, which is really now anyways, when you look at like forecasting demand, when you look at weather patterns, when you look at sort of metering in a way across a large population, AI can be very, very useful. And I think there's use cases that are going to deploy now. NERC is already looking at that about how to take advantage of AI and cloud infrastructure more across the bulk electric system. That's very useful. On the cyber side, I feel it's largely hyped up. There are AI use cases around, let's do workflow automation. Let's try to make a human more efficient. That can be done. And, and to be fair, the threats are fully engaged on AI in terms of like social engineering, right? You can get a video call on Zoom with your face, you speaking, hard to tell the difference, telling somebody to do a bank transfer. Like that's happening today. That's very difficult. The cyber threats are going to take down the grid using AI. No, they're not. Like there's not training data for it. And so we, there's vendors and folks that go out there and go, there's AI cyber attacks. And I keep going, show me one. Show me one. We'll have a conversation and there's not one that people can point to. So I don't want to say, let's not be ahead of the problem. We have so many other problems to currently fix that trying to forecast what may one day possibly be a problem versus the problems we're facing today feels a bit outside of stewardship. The, so if I have, let, let's take a quick example. If I have cyber threats, I'm trying to detect them. I could put humans looking at these patterns and come up with reliable signatures of what bad looks like and deploy those out across everybody. And we've had good success with that. As an example, the NSA found a state actor developing capabilities to target certain equipment that was deployed in the electric system as well as manufacturing system in the United States. We worked with them, analyzed the capability, wrote the detections for it and push it out to every one of our customers in real time before the attack even took place. So our customers were protected. Think about it from an AI perspective now. If I am dealing with something that's not been seen before, it's not in the training data. It by its very nature is an inject in the training data. So it sounds really good. Oh, we're going to use AI to detect cyber threats, but that AI model doesn't know what it's looking for. It's just looking at the training data to go, this is weird. And even if it found weird, it goes to a human analyst and they're going to go, why is it weird? The AI model is going to go, that's not my job. So now you've got human analysts getting millions of alerts a day of this is weird. And they're going, why, why is this weird? And they're trying to deal with that. For the operators or for folks that have ever dealt in operations, it's a lot like old school alarm management. Like before we actually knew how to do alarm tuning, alarm management. We had operators getting so many alarms, they started turning off the systems and it led to more of an unsafe environment than we had in terms of a safe environment. So there are applicable use cases of AI. I think AI is going to change a lot. I mean, call centers are going to go away within the next five years. Like AI is going to change societally a lot. And the, the sort of doomsday stuff that you hear from the Mark Zuckerberg's and Bill Gates, the world, like I get to, fortunately, unfortunately, I know some of these folks and you sit down with them, you go, why? Like I'm a member of the World Economic Forum, which like comes off as Illuminati sometimes, but it's just a bunch of rich people having tea. But when you sit down with these folks and I, I sit down with Bill, I'm like, what are you really concerned about? Like you talk about it like it's Skynet. Like what are you actually concerned about? He's like, oh, well, the real answer won't sell on the public. But the real answer is AI is going to take so many jobs out of the workforce. You're going to go from 5% unemployment to 15% and the society isn't built to handle that. And how do you deal with universal income or healthcare, whatever else, can't deal with it. And so we are literally about to walk off a cliff in terms of automation. So AI and automation, yep, let's pay attention. AI in terms of electric system reliability, yep, it's there. But if you take more complex and more digital and you have less understanding of why it's doing it, you better compensate that with something if you want real reliability. Our electric system is more reliable than ever before. But if it goes down, there's not one company that knows how to bring it back up. Okay. So that there's, there's a real risk that we're building in off that. So that's, that's where I think we want to. Great. All right. So good example. I'll, I'll use, I'll use a company that won't get in trouble. So I was down in Australia and we were working with a power company and they went a hundred percent renewable on their system. And again, I'm, I'm fine with any energy source. I just want balance. And so they went a hundred percent renewable and I walked into their energy management system and looked at their, their SCADA environment, their big screens and all that. And it was crazy in terms of the variability of what I was seeing. I've never seen anything like it before. And I asked the operations leader, the SCADA manager, it's like, is that a simulation? What's going on? So that's your life on a hundred percent renewables, which are inverter based resources. No spinning equipment, right? Inverter, just direct to the system. He said, without spinning equipment, we don't have inertia and inertia is what allows more time and flexibility and balancing ability in the electric system. I was like, well, how's the system running? He's like, great. It's wonderful. It's highly automated. Got all these profiles built in, more resilience, better, you know, cheaper kilowatt per hour. It's great. I was like, oh, that's good. And he's like, yeah, it's nice, but not a single person on this floor knows how it's working. And so if it were to go down, we don't know how to recover it because we don't know what to recover it to. And we have pushed that on certain countries and we're doing it now in the United States as well. So our system.
We don't know how it's working. I mean.
Yeah. I mean, we, we built computer programs with highly digital, highly complex systems of systems that are deployed across an environment without human knowledge of how they actually operate. Like I, I, I'm pretty good at driving my car, but if it breaks down, I have no clue about how to deal with the engine. And nowadays I can't even open it up myself. I gotta take it to a dealer. And, and someone knows how to work that car, but now have that car be a complex system that is the electric system across the United States with three different zones with a variety of different energy portfolios across transmission substations that are moving more digital and cloud infrastructure. And you've got about two billion cars, you'd have to diagnose at once. It's just a complex problem. The, the electric system today is more like a living organism than it is.
So what's the solution for that? What's the investment?
So first of all, we have to be a little bit smarter about the demands being made in the electric system. We haven't completely crossed the chasm yet. So I mean, number one, when I talk to the DOE, so again, break, 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 break his hat off, DOE head on. When I talk to the DOE, I talked about the need for spinning equipment. Like I don't care where it is. Is it nuclear? Great. Is it hydro? Great. You need spinning equipment to add inertia on the electric system. That's number one. Number two.
Spinning equipment.
Spinning equipment. Cause the only thing that creates inertia is big spinning things. And there's no such thing as fake physics. So we can't innovate that. So we need big spinning stuff on the electric system to allow us to have time. And there are a lot of power companies, I don't mean this to be bombastic in my next statement. It's okay to have a diverse set of skills, but there are a lot of power companies today that are being run by people who have no background in power. I mean, just pause there for a second. Because of that, when the big vendors come in and go, I can deliver you this system that saves you money, gets your resilience and better kilowatt per hour. And, and for public companies like public stock market companies and get your shareholders more value, they go, that looks great. Let's do it. But there's nobody around the room to go, but we don't know how to operate that. We don't know how to deal with that. So there's mandates that come down, use this system, these interconnected environments, et cetera. They're like, okay, I guess I'll try to figure it out somehow. And so you, there's got to be some expertise there or and what I work on the Senate Energy Natural Resources Committee on was where there's probably need to be a little bit more of a energy defense industrial base, if you will. So right now, man, we're getting into it. This is a good question. Right now, if you want to deploy under 35 KV equipment in, in the United States, you're dealing with Chinese infrastructure. Okay? And let's forget the cyber threat of China for a second, just from a supply chain perspective.
Yeah.
If, if it, if it goes down, I'm, I'm, I'm waiting on a 12 to 18 month supply chain to get the equipment back.
We're dealing with that every day.
Why? We have national security presentations, FBI directors, everybody else going, this is bad. Power companies going, this is bad. But then you have federal regulation that says you have to buy from them because they're under 25% of the lowest contract. And so we have FARs regulation, sort of compromises taking place on the federal side. And so it'd be much better to have more of an energy defense industrial base to say, look, you are a known vendor. We have these set of standards you've got to deal with. You've got to register. I, I, I think I'm the first CEO in history to ask Congress proactively for regulation on me. I said, look, I've got customers across power, manufacturing, et cetera. I'm deployed in nuclear power plants. My technology is, and I don't have any regulation on me whatsoever in what I do. I have decided against my company's financial interest, we have a hundred percent of our software development done in the United States. And that's not saying Indian, Ukrainian, Romanian developers aren't good, but I want to control my supply chain because I'm a big target. I was like, and it costs me like twice as much as my competitors to do that. Why do I have the choice? Why do I have the choice to cut costs in a way that decreases national security? But they're all regulated to held them back. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. You've got to change some of those things if you want this to be fixed. You've got to make it where I can't come up with the latest, greatest way to run your electric system without any knowledge of the electric system. And then a, a group of folks with no understanding of the electric system go, that saves you money and then pushes it on the very few people that we have that run an electric system. That's your issue.
And so there's a, I mean, how do you develop that talent pool? How do you expand the, the intellectual capital? So how do we create a better balance?
Yeah. So number one, I do think there has to be some government stepping in. Time to, has to be certain, has to be certain government intervention, in my opinion, on that topic. And federal and states are not harmonized at all right now in what they're doing. Like there, there needs to be some harmonization on that. Heck, the federal government isn't harmonized. You've got TSA on pipelines. You've got SEC in terms of reporting requests for public companies. You've got SISA, you've got NRC, you've got NERC. You've got five or six different government agencies in any given time to talk to a company with five or six different efforts that they're all complying to. Got it. So there's, there's some efforts already happening to try to harmonize that. Let's, let's talk about the workforce piece. Number one, you have set of skills and people in the company. You got to empower them, right? I get asked all the time, how do you get like an IT person to go to OT? Well, heck, if you're a power company, let them out to the, the dam, let them out to the, the substation, show them cool stuff. If I'm going to be in an office, working at a bank and an office working at a power company, the only difference is the pay. But if I get to be at a power company and I get to go do cool stuff out in the field, screw the bank, you know, I'm going to the power company. And so there's some work that we need to be there, some work on the HR systems. We were talking casually about this before. I get asked in Congress all the time, there's 700,000 unfilled cybersecurity jobs. I'm like, no, there's not. Like, yes, there is. Look at the, the latest data. I'm like, look, there's about 300,000 of those that are asking for three years of experience for an entry level job. And there's another 200,000 of them that are asking for 10 years of experience in malware analysis, 10 years of experience in instant response, 10 years of experience in cybersecurity skillsets and paying $40,000 a year. You don't actually have the workforce problem you think you have. You just have an HR management skill issue with not encouraging people to get out of the field. But let's go back to, again, not just present a lot of problems. Back to the topic of what NIPA is doing in the electric system right now. There are certain cybersecurity efforts that cybersecurity team is doing that provide visibility and insight into that complex system. And it was as useful for operating system as it is detecting cyber threats. As we as a community move more towards those types of efforts, instead of the ones that just sound good, we're going to get better control over our environments. At the same time, we need to work with Department of Labor and you work with Department of Energy on, here's the actual skills we need of the people that we're going to put to work. And we need you to go provide some oversight through Department of Energy or others on the vendors and what they're putting into place. And, and it's, it's, that's what makes this so complex is there's like four pressure points, not one, that have all got to be hit about the same time. Your role in it is making sure that you do it well at NIPA and then showing that that can work. And those case studies matter a lot in Congress. Like every time I go and I can take case studies, they, they don't, I, I don't, I have not found outside of like, I don't know, Ted Cruz, like congressmen that are really that biased. They're, they're generally looking for who can bring an answer because I got 30 other things to deal with. And when I put, here's what works in front of them, they're all on it. But if it's just we're screwed and things are bad and I don't know what to do, they go, I don't know. Then who's the loudest voice? And that's all that wins. So show that NIPA can do it. Do it well. Not only on making smarter choices around the automation environments you're putting into place. Smarter choices around the cybersecurity efforts that you're doing that contribute to operations, not just cybersecurity. Highlight those case studies and it can absolutely be one of about a dozen out there on this getting told.
So as we wrap this up, is that a nugget you would leave out? What's, as a board, what would you challenge us to do? Leave us with a couple, three key, leave behind that as a board, we should embrace.
Perfect. Perfect. And so I, I've not mentioned the NIPA staff on these, apologies in advance, but here's, here's if, if I was a board member of this company or trustee of this company, what are some of the things I care about in terms of cybersecurity? Don't get too caught up in KPIs, right? A lot of people will go, here's a green dashboard and we're green here, we're green here, we're a 3.5 score, whatever. And none of you know what that means because I don't know what that means. Okay. We just feel good about it. But you should be demanding capabilities. Hey, if out of, out of all of our sites, if they went down, which ones do we have the capability to know why they went down and to recover them? And against what scenarios? You got to think about, is it a, is it a hurricane event in the south? Or is it a cyber threat? It can't just be cyber. I wouldn't worry about China, Iran, Russia teaming up and coming after you. It hasn't happened before. And I don't want to not be proactive, but deal with the things that happen. Ukraine electric system attack. There's one. Pipe dream, the one that I mentioned earlier, there's two. Ransomware in the operations side of the house. There's three. There's three things that have consistently happened in the electric sector. If those three scenarios were to happen at NIPA for us, IT and OT, because both have components in it, would we be okay? Do we feel comfortable, not in preventing the attack, because you can't prevent everything. Would we feel comfortable on knowing what to do? And we have the capabilities in place against those specific scenarios to even figure out what went wrong in the first place and, and get back up and running, if not be able to detect and prevent it in the first place. Do I have that capability? And the question shouldn't be 6.5, it should be yes or no at the different sites. For Chevron, for every one enterprise IT network Chevron has, they have 167 OT networks. So realize it's still these disparate environments. So number one, understand the scenarios. So realize it's still these disparate environments. So number one, understand the scenarios that matter to NIPA. And demand an understanding of the capabilities the team can deliver against those realistic scenarios that have actually happened. I would have the board, I don't know if you've done this before or not, Justin, I mean, I think we've been involved with it, but, but, um, table top exercise. It up levels the literacy of a board significantly to be able to say overlayed against NIPA against a real scenario. Here is what it would look like against us. What is our role as trustees and board members? What are the questions we should be asking? When I go and talk to public companies, there's a very simple one to start with, which is your SEC filings. Cause they have the eight K filings and then they have to have a ten K filing when a, a material event happens. Go reverse engineer the ten K filing that you would say, can you even answer the questions? Can you answer the lawsuit questions, the regulatory questions, the operations questions, et cetera? Yes or no, based on the data we're collecting in the environment. You're not, uh, one of those public companies, that type of exercise is still good. What would we be saying in the public? What would we need to understand? What would we need to deliver to our community members? Do we have the capabilities deployed across NIPA to be able to answer those questions? Yes or no? And then lastly, and as it comes to the vendors and so forth, I think. Uh, again, I don't want to create new processes for Justin, everybody else. Um, but I think it's useful to understand sort of security from the front end of those acquisitions, but and I don't mean just cybersecurity. I mean, your ability to operate, um, on these new systems that sound good and so forth. What is the total cost of ownership? Is there going to be an up leveling of skill staff or additional headcount required to even operate the thing that we're buying in the first place? Let's understand that going into it so we can at least make a more informed choice. And if we're all comfortable with the answer at the end of the day, that's fine. Those would be the ones that I would give you.
All right. Perfect. Appreciate that.
Perfect.
Team, we got that?
You got it.
Who wrote that down? Everybody got that?
Sorry for the homework, but yeah.
And just saying, if you'd be dressed up, how much better you would.
I thought he looked good.
United, United lost the luggage. I didn't just mean to be insulting. But, but as the military Alabama guy, this is dressing up. The next stop is Boston Beer Company, who's also critical infrastructure. They're talking about securing their manufacturing environment. Much as I love power. There's a, there's a couple, there's a couple.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Did that get you going? Fermi?
Yeah. That's what I said to Lori. Just frightening.
Kindred spirits. Uh, well, that was terrific. Uh, Justin, thank you. Rob team, whatever, um.
I'm glad it worked out. Great.
The guy seems pretty good. I mean, he seems to have a handle on, I don't know, he can talk faster than I can think. So I don't know, even if he isn't good, I mean, he convinced me he knows where he's going. He's a snake oil salesman or something. Yeah. He, he can say he can talk faster than I can think. So. Uh, very, very, very impressive.
That was excellent.
Yeah, that's good stuff. Yeah. And appreciate.
He's been a great partner.
Yeah. And kudos to him and his team for investing in us and the munis and Vic. Nice, nice job. Nice job leaning in there. Well done, Vic. And.
Yeah, thank you very much. We find it very important to work with our communities, you know, and to spread out that cyber hygiene that he mentioned. Also, the IT OT aspect is, is a huge part of what we do in our program. So. We've lived in that space, so we know how to put that all together in our program. So.
Yeah. And just underscores the importance of just building baseline capabilities, foundational capabilities. Everybody wants the bells and whistles and all the fancy stuff, but. Yeah, they're gonna get nailed just because they just don't have, you know, the foundational, uh, competencies and capacities to. To cope and deal, um, but.
Watch out for moths.
Yeah, exactly.
Well. Yeah. I mean, again, it comes back to you don't know how to operate, you know, uh, the insects, you know, got a leg up on you, you know, kind of thing. So. All right. Well, a great, uh, jumpstart to, uh, uh, they, so thank you again to all of you for bringing him and. Uh, frankly, my continuing dialogue, great resource and appreciate his time and willingness and. Sorry to see he had travel issues. Uh, all right. Next up, uh, Joe. I think you're in the queue. I got ten thirty-two on my schedule. I got ten thirty-two on my watch, Joe. So we are really right on.
Can't thank you enough for putting me right behind that guy. You guys even remember what I say? Um, we go right.
Slowly.
Yeah, maybe you'll hear what I say anyway, right?
Right.
Um. So you go right to the next slide. Thank you. Um, uh, just wanted to give you a brief update on the operational status, uh, uh, going into the summer months right now. Uh, we have no major GNT concerns right now. Uh, we did actually host in, uh, May sixteenth, we always have an internal meeting before the winter season and before the summer season, just making sure that all of our. Um, outages are, outages are in place, all the proper maintenance is to prepare for the summer, uh, months. It's going to be particularly interesting for us this year. They're forecasting a significantly warmer summer already. And significantly more storms in the Atlantic. So we're.
Already.
Yeah, we're.
Witnessed today.
Exactly. It's great. And, um, uh, great for us, but for the system, it can be a strain and we're ready, we're ready and our, we've well drilled our, our, our responses to the hurricane season as well. And, uh, have gone through all of our preparedness, uh, measures. And even in ERM, we are, uh, making sure that we're, we're looking at the fuel prices and topping fuel for those dual source units in case we ever encounter an issue there as well. So from a resilient standpoint, we're doing that. I did also want to announce that we did, um, you, you may recall that, uh, Hyro Flores was a regional manager at the BG facility, moved on to Niagara. He's doing a fantastic job there. Um, but very, very well received. We had to backfill him at BG. We did hire a gentleman, Tim Rich. Who is now our regional manager in, uh, the central region. Brings with him external, he was an external candidate, some external, um, um, capabilities and, uh, competencies. From his experience at Orsted GE and other areas that we felt was, were really, uh, uh, gonna weave in well with the crew there. So he's, he started a few weeks ago. Hit the ground running, then to a number of meetings and, uh, drinking from a fire hose a little bit, but, uh, definitely capable, lives up in the Clifton Park area. So, uh, local guy. From a regulatory standpoint, we're on top of our, our TOP, which is the transmission operator, uh, registration. We are, uh, taking a little bit of a, uh, reprieve from, um, some of the procedural things to get our EMS in place. So that's the energy management system that we're. We're putting in place to, um, we have kind of a difficult timing issue here. We could either go through a procedural change, get the registration and go through a re-registration under a new EMS. Or we can get the new EMS in place and go through registration. So what we did is we decided that latter scenario was better for us. And what we've done is come to an agreement with New York ISO to, uh, be our, our TOP, um, by contract for the assets that may come into play. That we have that obligation for. So we're, we're in a good place for that as well. Uh, we expect all that to be in place for, by the end of twenty twenty-five and that, we need that in place for some of the assets that will be operating. Largely under the, uh, development works, um, substation equipment in the senior region. And the stamp out in Western New York, there's going to be some obligations there. So again, we got an interim plan in place. We'll get that EMS system working. And we'll continue to, uh, train our staff, which is a major component of what we're trying to do there as well. We are also at Y forty-nine. Our O and M, uh, operation maintenance agreements for those, that particular language is, uh, it, it, over the years, you've heard that as being a very critical asset, uh, transferring energy into the, uh, zone J. And, uh, K into the city in Long Island. On our, on this side of the, uh, the river, uh, we've come to an agreement with Con Edison on maintenance and O and M for, um, that portion. On the Long Island side, we are going to do some, uh, maintenance agreement with, uh, PSEG. From an operation standpoint in the near term, but we're actually going to do the maintenance. So this is all part of Sal Rojas and his new role, which will get you in, him in front of you as well. As the, uh, the head of transmission now, um, to, to look for optimizations and resources to do what we see is coming to, to perform what's coming into place on transmission in CNE. And across the state. Um, so that's why we elevated that role directly to me. Um, Sal's got some plans in place and this is our, some of the first steps that were put in place for, um, he made that, that major piece of equipment. And we're watching some other.
Good outcomes. I mean.
Those are good outcomes. Those, what, these are desirable for us because we're going to get the try on. First of all, there's, uh, it, you know, with it. The regional transmission owners and the, and the operators there, you're limited with the options. If it's people who are willing to do it in those areas. So in one case, we had a willing partner to take on all of it with Con Ed, with PSEG, they're looking to, you know, they were looking, it seems to, to get away from the maintenance aspects of it. There's a lot of reporting and obligations to that, that not a lot of people. Uh, wanna do. We're accustomed to that. We're used to it. Um, but we didn't really have centralized staff or local staff, um, in transmission that was, uh, routinely doing that. So that's what Sal was working on. And now we're comfortable in a position now where we could take on that obligation, that senior region. Um, in terms of other regulatory, uh, for comprehensive risk assessment. We're preparing for this inspection in, um, in, uh, St. Lawrence. And, um. The FDR power plant, this, the scope of this is comprehensive. So they're going to talk about structural, hydrological, uh, geotechnical, they're gonna have our engineers involved. There's going to be a very intense, uh. Review with FERC that starts in June twenty twenty-four. We're ready for this. Largely because we're looking for a lot of the evaluation of the consequence of failure mechanisms. And as you know, from our own ISO fifty-five thousand one certification, that's an area that we, we've got a, a very good template of how to look at that. Look for it, uh, failure modes and effects, uh, for a lot of different assets. And actually our roots in asset management come from FERC for decades. So we're, we're all prepared, prepared for that. And, um, there'll be a risk informed decision that, uh, we'll be looking to identify interim risk reduction measures and recommendations, whether if they come in, uh, with us with any of those. Uh, so supply management, I'll talk about a little bit more in depth when we talk about smart pack connect. Uh, but we're continuing to, uh, track, uh, the commodity labor and transportation issues that are associated with that as well. Uh, next slide, please.
You're gonna come back to that, you said?
Yeah, I'll come back to that. Um, also I did touch on safety on the first slide there, just to say we're doing some things. I wanted to highlight a few of those here. Um, you may recall, we used to more routinely report some of the drought rate, reportable and some of the things that, uh, were going on there. Uh, you know, with your feedback, I wanted to give you more of a strategic view of the kinds of things that we're doing to, to look at that closely. We still pay very close attention to that and are obligated to report those things. And, um, to, to Bureau Labor Statistics and others, OSHA. Um, but one of the things that we're doing is be more proactive and strategic about, you know, remedying those things. And it's, and, and I'm, I'm actually happy to say it's working. There's things that are working here. So one is we did in a, a safety, uh, uh, perception survey. We're actually using what they call DuPont model. And you might ask why DuPont? Well, DuPont has historically been a, uh, a frontrunner for decades on safety. And most organizations, when they're benchmarking against their practices. Um, it's difficult to benchmark if you don't have a single template to benchmark against, and they have a template to do that. So we did a safety perception survey that allowed us to compare ourselves to other people in our industry and other industries on safety. And those were, that was performed, um, where we literally asked people to weigh in, our own perception of our own employees to weigh in. Um, we completed that in March. The results are coming in right now and, uh, we're actually going to sit down with staff in June to, to present what that actually says. We'll bring that to you as well. Uh, Dennis will bring that to, uh, um, Labor and then on June fifth and six, I think are the dates we're together with them. Um, to talk about this as well. So they get the immediate feedback on, on, uh, the represented employees as well. We've, it's still the, what they call the, uh, Monday safety minute. This is a, a best practice that we learned from Niagara where. Uh, they were starting to broadcast to their teams, kind of like a topic of the week. Um, could be anything from. You know, uh, bloodborne pathogens to, you know, uh, ladder safety, things like that. Uh, we've incorporated that corporate wide as a best practice, been very well received and it's good fodder for looking, we have, we, we have a safety talk between, before every meeting. And operations and it's good fodder for that discussion as well. Each week kind of get refreshed on, uh, a particular topic.
Probably have a safety talk room for board.
We, we, we.
Safety issues in here.
We could do it. We would, we would do it. We could do it.
All right.
Um. We're also still continuing to standardize a lot of our, 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 a lot of, again, the, the way the organization was built over decades. A lot of parochial practices on safety and the way we do things in management, we're making those more uniform. Um, on the canal side, lift bridge safety is another thing we're working on. We have seventeen, uh, bridges and we have some, uh, I've already quickly identified some short good, uh, short-term mitigations for those as well and putting those in place. Like ladders, again, taken out of service that are, are risky and things like that. And, um, developing some long-term mitigations as we speak. We also have this kind of a, a neat program that's kind of from an employee engagement standpoint where it's a, this safety act recognition program where you're given kind of a playing card for just a, you know, it's kind of catching them doing something good. Routine. And, uh, it, at the end of a certain period, whoever's got the best hand gets a prize, um, from these, these playing cards. So it's some of the, kind of a unique engagement opportunity from a safety's perspective as well. And doing a lot of safety sit downs on the canal side as well. Their, their drought rate is higher than ours, but the nature of the work is different than ours. So it's not really a, a apples and apples comparison. Uh, we do look at, um, from the BLS standpoint.
Much higher. What's the difference?
Um, they're about three point eight, I think, right now, and we're, we're about one point seven and. Yeah, they're like double. And again, the nature of their work, they're still kind of within the confines of what, what they, you know, we don't want to accept any, obviously our real target's always zero. Um, but, uh, you know, they're, the nature of their work's a little bit different. The other thing too is.
What? I mean.
So what they're doing is it's more construction. And it's, and some, and some marine work. So the, the, you know, the, the things that they do is there's a lot more manual processes, less automation. Lot of more unique tasks than, than we're accustomed to on utility side. There's a lot more routine. To some of the things we do on that side. So, uh, and well-developed safety practices that we can share across utility industry. And the canals industry is, you know, it's not as sophisticated from that standpoint.
So our historical average isn't a relevant benchmark, you're saying, or are you trying to rationalize the differential? Or are you saying that you're real?
I'm trying to rationalize that if you're doing, um, you know, uh, uh, maybe a different examples, if we're doing like operation maintenance work in a plant.
Yeah.
Versus construction.
Yeah.
The tests are so different that the, the acceptable, I wouldn't say the acceptable rate, but the, the, the milestone, the competitive rates of what they, they, they are in the industry are different. So we're comparing ourselves, our workers. Again, our real number zero, but we're comparing them against relevant work that's done in the industry versus what we do on utility side. So all in all, and then by the way, that's significantly improved. That, that was much higher. So the trend is down, the trend there. So these stand downs are working. And the good news is a lot of that, as I said, is working. We just got, uh, uh, earned the American Public Power Association's, uh, excellence in twenty twenty thirty, earning the diamond certification, which is the highest rating. Uh, they have for safety. So we're very proud that. It is an annual.
Do we receive it annually?
Not diamond every annually, but we do, we generally receive some of the leadership awards, but this is the highest award.
Terrific.
Kudos. Very happy about that. His, uh, next slide, please. As Justin pointed out, I wanted to talk a little bit about smart path connect and we'll talk a little bit about the supply chain here as well. So we're currently in what we call harder outage. Um, it's planned to end on June fifteenth, which means we'll be hopefully energizing by then. Uh, the work is currently in progress. Uh, you know, this is when we used to name things by where it starts and where it ends, but from Moses Willis and Will, to Willis and Willis Ryan lines. Um, we got sixty-eight of a hundred and nineteen circuit miles installed and completed to date. On the substation side, there's three development areas that are kind of greenfield, uh, new substations, the Wilson, uh, Willis Annex, Haverstock and New Adirondack. Uh, we got some foundation work that are completing Willis and Adirondack, and we're near completion in Haverstock as well. A lot of underground and, uh, above grade activities are still going on. There are very active, uh, construction scenes. On the, uh, more brownfield areas. So these would be within areas that we've already have substation work, uh, can, you know, existing assets are Marcy Messina and Pat Node. And those are, uh, currently we're in an outage in Pat Node and we're on schedule, uh, for the new breaker energization on June third there. And Ryan line phase one, uh, outage is completed and the new breaker energized on, back in February fifth. So all that to say. Progress, progress is, we're, you know, on track, on schedule, uh, largely, but we're at risk on a few other areas. So I wanted to just talk about the project delivery risks that you may hear about in the future. Supply chain and market forces. Um, we have a two month, over two month delay on delivery of circuit breakers. And you would think there's a lot of commonality of the, the root cause for some of these supply chain issues. This particular one is due to, um. Uh, supply chain issues going through the Red Sea. So fifty-one breakers are part of that portfolio of what we need to install. A lot of that, those assets are coming through the Red Sea. So any delays in that, uh, transfer there, um, is, could be impacting our schedule. We do have an over a five month delay of anticipated delivery of auto, auto, uh, transformers, which are large pieces of equipment. Um. Uh, that was due to some testing in their factory, except this testing that actually failed. So these failed catastrophically in their bay. Our QA QC team and engineering teams are very heavily involved with this. Um, but in the end, um.
Are we on site for that kind of test?
We do go there. We do physically go for those, those types of tests. We do physically go there on occasion. What they, um. When these things fail though, the, the, we work very closely with the manufacturers because. Um, they're motivated to get them out of those bases. They're big pieces of equipment and their. Supply of, we're not the only customer, right? So we do have a number of transformers on order for a number of different projects for these same vendors. But so do a lot of other people. So they're very motivated to fix this and move on. So we're, we're, we're looking for other, um, mechanisms. So we're 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 looking for other um mechanisms to kind of incent them to exploit this, but they are already incented as well to get these things moving along. Um so we're gonna continue to watch that. Um and then there are certain enclosures, controlled enclosures that we've had some delays on. Uh that really have been uh more on the engineering side, like the quality of the drawings and and specifications have been not up to par for our quality control. Um and so there's some been some delays on the technical side, so that's again, some of the symptoms of the 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 workforce constraints that are in the industry. They know there's only so many people to do this work and there's design, everything from design to installation.
Are those more extreme, Joe, than what we're seeing in other projects or is that pretty typical?
It seems to be slowly, I'm kind of looking at Trish Lombardi for this, but seems to be slowly growing, like it's it used to be anomalies. It seems to be more and more we're seeing this, um so these numbers are probably typical now, right?
Yeah, I would agree, I think the pace of the work, magnitude, the complexity, I think the entire industry, the workforce. Right, we're all fighting for the same talent, right, so even Joe mentioned some of the uh acceptance testing, the factory failures we've seen. Like that's something NIPA is not used to, these are vendors we've used for a number of years, we have relationships where they're frequently. And some of these failures are very new to us and new to these vendors too, right, they're struggling to to figure it out right alongside us. So it is becoming a bit more commonplace, um and really all the more reason that our teams are so, you know, so deep into these projects, right? Oversight right along with these vendors, solving problems right along with them, but it is becoming a bit more common probably than we're used to. But the pace of work has also increased and the portfolio has increased as well.
And and Trish and her team, I should say, they're way more involved than like the the frequency of calls and conversations and site visits. For to the U C manufacturers has increased tremendously, uh which is also a resource, you know, draw for us to make sure that we're stay on top of this. And it's also worth noting, especially on the transmission work, um little more flexibility on like a like a next gen Niagara, we got multiple generators. But in the transmission work, if we miss an outage window because of one of these supply chain, we may miss it for a year or longer. It's uh, you know, you get like a um, they're they're we're scheduling twenty twenty six outages now with the New York guys, so. So if that is missed, we might not get a chance until a few years down the road for those, so. These are obviously longstanding um capital programs, so there's, you know, you can go back and forth and they're gonna be very limited. Because we're again, we're not the only ones doing work on the system, so they're gonna be reluctant to give us outages and create. Um constraints on the system by giving other outages as well, so it'll be, we could we could lose our our place in the queue. Uh on the outage schedule because of some of these other supply chain issues. So I just wanted to make sure I made that point as well.
And what's the how's the what's the ISO's response to that, I mean?
They they just manage the best they can, if they cancel our outage, they may grant someone else an outage to do some other work. Um but but essentially, they they can only do so much, they gotta maintain system reliability, right?
I think we do, we do try to work closely, if they have to steal a few days on the front end, we try to get a few days on the back end. Um you see up there kind of construction sequencing, we work really closely with the contractors, right? Can you advance your work, accelerate within a smaller window, right? So it's a kind of multi-pronged approach when we lose a couple of days, whether it's weather weather related, right, there's hands off days in the system, it's too hot, right? They won't give us the outage or there's other issues on the system, other equipment out of service for even other entities, so we we lose our outage, right? Or our outage gets pushed, so it's really kind of all hands on deck situation between operations, construction, engineering, uh right? To be as creative as we can, right, to continue to move the work forward.
And and those hands off days are interesting too, because and we're probably gonna see quite a few of them this summer, because I said the temperatures are gonna be hot. But what 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 these outages do is create what they call single contingencies on the on the system, which means they can't afford another thing to happen.
Right.
And when they get to those points, if we have routine maintenance those areas, not today, you're not. And so we have a lot of uh communication with New York guys on that as well, where there's uh contingencies that they bring to us that say we're hands up. We also have self direct on the generation side, our own um hands off days where we don't want to be the one that accidentally trip the unit and create some kind of cascading outage. So we have our own protocols to do that as well in the summertime.
Okay. All the choreography there. All of our challenging.
Exactly.
Okay, questions for Joe?
I think that's it for my presentation.
Anything else? Alright, thanks, Joe. Alright Alexis uh. On the risk and resiliency.
Good morning. Um so this month's risk spotlight is actually going to be on NIPA's critical infrastructure. This risk is the risk of a failure which results in either safety issues, property damage. High cost of repair or importantly, service disruption. We do have a separate cybersecurity risk, so our discussion today is really based on the assets themselves and their operation, right? We're not gonna try to superimpose the two, um actually, we try very hard not to double count. If we can go to the first slide, please, thank you. Um so we're focusing on this today because as a physical asset based entity. One of the most important things that we can do to ensure our mission to deliver safe, reliable and affordable electricity across the state. Is to enhance and maintain and preserve the integrity of our assets and their reliability. So we do spend quite a bit of time focusing on this and understanding and managing the risks associated with critical infrastructure. Because given the high potential for impact and you can see that is one of our top three risks in terms of score. However, we also, if we look to the right, see that. It is a risk that is currently well managed and is within our risk appetite. That really just implies that currently we have effective controls and mitigations in place. And it implies that we're also keeping up with the challenges and they run across a spectrum, everything from aging infrastructure. The impacts of climate change to just the increasing demands on and expectations of our electric system. So we're constantly looking at this when we're evaluating this risk to see if it's still, if we're still within our appetite in terms of our responses, controls and mitigations. When we look at our approach to critical infrastructure, it basically falls into two buckets. The first one is around the supporting infrastructure and the governance. And the second is realistically around the investments, both capital and innovative that we do place into the system. And so we highlighted a few today, they have multiple benefits to NIPA and the communities we serve. But our focus today will be on the impact they have in terms of helping us to manage our risk. Ironically, the first two we have listed are in the bucket around new technologies and digitization. Which we heard from our guest speaker today does actually introduce risk to NIPA from a cyber perspective. However, we've employed them because of their benefits, both for operations and to help manage the risk of operational failures. So there is a reason why we do actually intend to continue to invest in these type of programs and and approaches. In terms of our integrated smart operations center. It's beneficial to help us mitigate risk because of its abilities regarding real time and predictive analysis. Related to asset performance, so it is giving us insights. And then if we combine this with our Clark Energy Center, which has continuous monitoring and provides a communication hub between itself. The operating sites and with the New York ISO, that gives us the ability to enhance our reliability. And importantly, to react quickly should there be an issue that we have to respond to. Joe mentioned before that we are certified against the ISO fifty five thousand one standard. And that's an asset management standard, it's international. And it is focused around the entire life cycle of assets and a really important feature of it is continuous improvement. So something we'll always be looking to monitor for. We also utilize an enterprise wide asset management system. And this is beneficial because it helps for end to end planning and management, which helps us to prevent issues from starting from the first place. By able, by being able to better plan and deploy maintenance activities. And then we do have a whole plethora of programs and we do have DAM safety listed as an example. And those are the ones that are focusing back on the people, which our guest speaker also mentioned today. Things about training, awareness, accountability and a focus on safety and compliance. Layered over all of this are the governing bodies around asset management and portfolio management. And of course, an incident review board and what those provide are structured escalation paths. That help bring information to the right leaders at the right time to help us make better decisions about our assets, whether it's for longer term planning. Or again, response to an unfolding issue that we're discovering. I could pause for a moment there.
You roll.
Keep rolling, I will keep rolling, so then if we switch to the investment side, we also have a couple of examples that again, of course, they have multiple benefits. However, to focus on them from the risk management perspective, if we look at projects like next gen Niagara and the Lewiston pump life extension. Sorry, hard to say, um this is about improving our assets and preparing them for the changes ahead in our industry. So it is about replacing obsolete and out of end of life, sorry, equipment, it's about upgrading and modernizing. And also looking at how we will incorporate the digital technologies that help us optimize performance. And also give us the data to give us insight into our assets and to control them remotely. Again, that's notwithstanding that mitigating one type of risk sometimes introduces new ones. And that's why we partner with our cybersecurity team to make sure that we're putting those appropriate protections in place. If you look at partnerships such as the Smart Path Connect, that's also looking at how we are upgrading transmission and substations, you know, along the line as well. The first two examples are more generation based. We're also looking at innovative approaches that help us assess our asset condition. So one of the examples here is around the um, sorry, it's unmanned aircraft system or drone program. So not only does that give us better insights, real time into the actual condition of our assets. But it removes the human hazard from the typical inspections that would have been performed by a person. And then finally, sometimes it's back to basics, we need the right tools to be able to help us maintain. And even perform emergency maintenance on our equipment. And so investments into our cranes at Niagara and Saint Lawrence are also really critical to allow us again, to make sure that our equipment is in good condition. Running smoothly and of course, to quickly respond should we have an emergency situation arise. In addition, things that aren't listed on here are like the basics that we look across all the different risks that we assess within our profile. And that can, um that considers looking at business continuity plans, are they up to date? When you can't go to your normal location or use your normal operating mechanisms, how do you keep everything running at the plant and the transmission substations? Um you would go to your business continuity plans. Our guest speaker warned us a little bit about metrics, but sometimes key risk indicators can provide some insight. We just look at a handful of them under this category and they include things like commercial availability and transmission forced outage hours. They are right within target right now and they've been stably trending over the past year. But it is sometimes good just to see if those trends do fluctuate, they give us some insights sometimes into potential future issues. And then good news, um we have Angela here today that um more than ten audits were conducted across critical infrastructure related activities. And uh with no high observations, so overall, we look across all these different elements of the profile. Despite the high level of potential risk and impact, we do feel that this risk is well managed and within appetite at this time. Any further questions?
Um yeah, I think we would all be surprised if you, you know, heard otherwise, uh it's clearly a priority, it always is. And we invest in it literally, figuratively, in a significant way. Uh your first time looking at it, any observations or takeaways? And uh your first go around that gave you pause or concern that?
So no, um actually, no, not necessarily, I do come from the energy industry, I think if anything, I was happy to see that the programs and approaches that we have in place. Meet expectations from a risk management perspective, we align to international standards. We have programs that focus on the human factor, the safety, the people, the training. Um we are digitizing and using data and tools to help us make better decisions. So I think that if anything to me that gave me comfort that we're not standing still. We're staying on top of evolving needs and we're making sure that we're making the investments to keep abreast of those so that we can continue to manage our assets well. So um I did not perceive to. See any big gaps, I think if anything, or you know, was always continuous improvement, but there was nothing that stood out that I hadn't. Um I had expected to see that was not in place at NIPA.
Great, great.
Any other questions?
Questions for Alexis, anybody? Louis, you're good?
Uh I am good and I uh just wanted to compliment uh Alexis in coming in and 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 taking a fresh set of eyes. To to this critical topic of uh of risk, so just thank you, Chairman Koma.
And thank you, Trustee Warren.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks Alexis, appreciate it. Uh next, uh from uh the development standpoint, Vanilla, I think you're uh. Educate and inform.
Mister Chairman, can I?
Favorite topics.
Mister Chairman, it's Louis Warren, just wanted to say that I need to um, I'll disconnect, um given my other conflict, so I just want to give you that.
Appreciate it, alright, thanks Louis.
Thank you, team.
Be in touch, thank you, have a great day. Alright Vanilla.
Yeah, so today.
Disconnect, you're here. It's time to connect.
Absolutely, so today we're going to look at the RFQ or the request for qualifications that we had issued about a month and a half ago. And the results we've received or the responses we've received, the results of our evaluation and how all of that looks like. Next slide, please. So what we're going to be looking at is a quick recap, if you recall, and back in January, we had issued an RFI or request for information. And which informed that the private sector indeed is uh very interested in collaborating with NIPA. And which also kind of gave us informed how we should structure this particular RFQ, right? To pre qualify developers and investors specifically. And how we structured the RFQ. For when it comes to technologies, the responses we received, the approach to evaluation, what kind of elements did we consider? When we're pre qualifying these developers or investors, the respondents basically. And uh having the responses we received, how exactly did we go about evaluating them? So if you all recall, April nineteenth was when the RFU closed and we received ninety four responses. Today is May twenty first, we've completed our evaluations, we've circulated the memos to get everybody's concurrence and approval on everything. And we're presenting to you here on May twenty first already, so next slide, please. A little bit on the recap, so on Jan second twenty twenty four, earlier this year, we had issued an RFI. That was to understand how the private sector is thinking about collaborating with NIPA. Where are their thoughts, where do they see value in NIPA stepping in or stepping up to support them on their projects and moving the needle further along? When it comes to renewables in the state. And uh we did not limit it to just developers or investors, it was wide open. When we got the hundred seventy plus responses to that RFI, that was from everybody, developers, investors. Engineering procurement and construction companies, engineering consulting companies, other management consulting companies. Uh OEMs, not just related to like solar panels or renewables related, but in general transformer OEMs and others as well. So that RFI was more us to understand the market landscape, us to understand how the markets again, like thinking about collaborating with NIPA. So there was no procurement outcome or action from that RFI. But it did inform us about how we should be pursuing the next set of collaboration or the partnerships that we be more deliberate. And uh structuring those in a way that it'll be successful and win win for everybody that's involved. So next slide, please. Then, based on that, we had issued a request for qualifications uh back in March, mid March. And uh that request for qualifications was focused specifically around co-development and co-investment opportunities. So those that already have projects in their pipeline that they would like to partner with NIPA on as development for co-development. Or those that are interested in investing money into renewable energy projects, whether as partnering with NIPA. Or on the specific projects when we bring the developers into the mix as well. So we continue to take the technology agnostic approach while we're being cautious about what can we significantly bring online quickly. And in a more fiscally responsible manner as well. So this RFQ was open to everybody, the land based renewables, solar, land based wind or offshore wind developers. Battery energy storage systems, other energy storage technologies, um green hydrogen when it comes to uh for power applications. And also transmission as well, related transmission, because it is, as we all know, a chicken and egg situation, you need. You know, you need transmission to be able to put the generation on the grid, so. And expanded that pool, we already have a robust pre qualified pool of partners and co-developers for transmission. But we this kind of expanded that pool as well. So what did we ask from these respondents? We asked them to kind of demonstrate what their experience is. Depth of years, their team qualifications, their technical capabilities, how much have they built to date? But and we also asked them for their financial capabilities, it's more like an overview. We did not rule anybody out, there was not a minimum cut off or criteria in our evaluation process for that particular category. Because we did want to encourage people that want to come into New York market and make their entry as well and see how we can facilitate that as well. So uh partnership structures, partnership structures is not just being rigid, saying this is all we can do. But having that. But having the flexibility to be collaborating with us and think create, thinking creatively to kind of make a significant difference and impact there as well. And of course, any applicable legislative and legal elements that are typical to NIPA or any state entities when it comes to procurement. The evaluation team did was also a diverse group from across the organization. That included of course our strategic supply management folks, the renewable, I mean, my team itself, the renewable project development folks. And also project finance to look at the different elements and the qualifications that we have asked in the RFQ. So.
So just to clarify, so there was you screened out 15 of the 94?
Screened out 15 of the 94.
These criteria.
So when we.
How much of that was qualitative, quantitative? I mean, it was either yes, no, or there was judgmental evaluation.
It's a combination of both. So a majority of the 15 that did not, it's not they did not make the cut, is because if you look at the first section where we talk about, we asked them, hey, we're looking for core development opportunities or co-investment opportunities, you could pick either or or and. Or you could just pick the technology that you prefer. So most of them did not fit mostly the categories of co-development and co-investment. So several of them were, for example, EPC players. They would come in and they are required for projects for specific projects when we move along. But they just don't fit the categories of this particular RFQ.
Give me that again, make sure I got that.
Yeah, so we, this particular RFQ was tailored towards core development opportunities, so developers or investors. Most of the 15 that have responded to ours are just either mostly purely equipment suppliers. Or engineering procurement and construction companies that are neither developers nor investors. So they did not fit the categories for this particular RFQ. So, but those services are needed in the future on specific projects and that's part of our planning. We will be issuing similar procurement actions in the future. Either for pre-qualification or, uh, project specific ones that these entities could participate again.
So the 15 who didn't quote unquote make the cut, your words, uh, may or may not be relevant as you said. It was less about whether qualitatively they measured up, it was just what was their focus. They're not in the development side of the house, they're in the supplier, whatever.
That's accurate. There were one or two when it came to the technology as well, which is very nascent. Still a concept, not even at R and D.
Trying to get.
Correct.
Cause we want to nurture and support that, we want to enable the new ideas and we're in a position to leverage our competencies and capacities, so we want to encourage that. So we, but we weren't being overly selective or restrictive.
No, we were not, no.
Okay, that's.
It was very qualitative, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
Right, uh, next slide please. So this is just a snapshot of the 79 developers that are pre-qualified. Those you see that are highlighted here are either pre-qualified for a specific category. Let's say either just Ross, say, asset management company. They are pre-qualified for co-investment only, not for co-development. Flatiron Energy or Flower Tech or Hecate you see here are pre-qualified for a particular technology, that's the energy storage systems here. So the highlighted are either specific category or specific technology. The rest of them have the ability to do either or or both of them and across the technology that we have included in our RFK.
So what were your expect, is this a surprise list of 79? Did you expect back in January, 79 names to be on this list? Did you expect 179? What did you expect?
179 would have, I mean, we probably wouldn't be presenting at this trustee meeting and I would have asked for an extension. But knowing the aggressive timeframe that we are working towards, especially with the strategic plan coming up on us. This is a very robust pool and we.
That's what I'm trying to get, is this a high quality, you got what, what we wanted here?
Absolutely.
And, and hopefully we got a little more than we wanted, or were there, there's some surprises in here?
Uh, no surprises, it was very pleasantly surprising if I would say, and it is encouraging to see such a positive and robust response. And, uh, we continue to see interest from others that haven't or that have missed the deadline as well. We had quite a few late submissions, that's not part of the 94. So we did talk about it and I think that probably leads to my next slide, which is also the last one. So next steps.
Before you, everybody would have expected to be on that list is on the list?
Everybody would have, yes, I would say yes confidently.
Predictable, expected players are included.
Correct.
And you've got others and the door is open, so okay, keep trucking.
Correct, and it also shows that, that are players for the law, uh, in this table here that are specifically focused in New York State. That are again national players, that are global players, that are some new ones that don't have yet have projects in New York or in the US, but are very large players that have been operating in the Scandinavian countries and globally, otherwise in Japan and elsewhere. That have submitted responses and we have them here as well.
Okay.
So. So, uh, the next steps, we have evaluated and will be notifying, I mean, those developers probably will know if they're watching this, that they are pre-qualified. But we would be formally notifying them that, uh, they are pre-qualified. And this opens the window for them to work with NIPA on specific project opportunities for the next five years. And the next step is looking at the specific project opportunities, there are two approaches here. Developers that have projects that they want to partner with NIPA on can directly bring those to us through our SSM group. And that we could single source because it's their project and we can work with them on those specific projects. Of course, doing around due diligence and everything else, business as usual, following our governance. Any projects that we have in our greenfield pipeline will be going through mini RFPs to a subset of these pre-qualified pool of developers and get competitive solicitor, through competitive solicitation process again further on specific project opportunities as well. So we already, uh, had some good conversations with quite a few of them, especially those that have more mature projects in the NISO queue. To identify specific project opportunities to kind of understand their interest and will further those conversations beyond this pre-qualification. So, uh, the next step is again, continuing to understand and negotiate with them, the term sheets basically to, for us to be able to get to that point where we can include the projects, specific projects in the strategic plan. And then continue to have those negotiations basically to get to a definitive agreement as soon as the strategic plan is adopted by you all by Jan 31st, 2025. So one thing, uh, chairman, going back to your point. There continues to be interest, uh, that developers and these respondents are expressing and wanting to collaborate with NIPA. So we've decided to leave the RFQ open and we will continue to receive, uh, proposals that we will evaluate on a rolling basis into the foreseeable future.
A couple of thoughts, well, I'm always sensitive to who didn't make the cut, so we're going to notify those who did. Or I'm assuming we're engaging the 15 who didn't.
We will also notify each other.
Clarity there on, on why not, what more they could do to qualify potentially or whatever.
That's correct.
Cure or remedy any of that, okay?
That's correct, and I do want to clarify again, this does not mean the window to them is closed, the doors are enclosed.
Right.
They just didn't fit this particular category, but they can continue to participate in the future solicitations that better align with their business models and what the solutions that they're offering.
And to be pre-qualified, you didn't have to have a project.
Correct.
You just merely have the capacity, interest, competency.
As an organization.
Correct.
Correct.
Right, so, all right, got it, great. Questions for Vanilla?
I think it's more a question for myself, my, my own understanding.
You want the rest of us to engage or you want to talk to yourself later?
No, 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 no. So if you go back to your list of pre-qualified developers, you talked about how some are co-investments, some are co-developers. You also talked about the 15 who might have, um.
Be suppliers.
It was suppliers or maybe technology. Do we coordinate these people, like if there's a, a mix? You know, do we say, hey, you have this, are you aware that this entity has this? And are you talking, are you communicating, like, are we also bringing people and entities together themselves? To cooperate together with NIPA?
So, great question, and the way we're thinking when it comes to the next, I would say the solicitations, especially for, let's say, let's take EPC partners as an example. They could be just engineering services providers, or they could do the full procurement and construction as well. But when, the way we're thinking about it is when we go out for that solicitation, we'll ask them to be, are you interested in being a turnkey solution provider as well? Because some of the suppliers are interested in getting into the development game, they just haven't done it yet and they look to, I think Adam, you can speak to some of them as well, right? So we would open the windows for them as well. And we did include specifically in this RFQ, which is going to continue to be our statement in the future solicitations as well, that NIPA retains the, uh, ability to bring more partners and bring like, bring them together, kind of be the matchmaker on specific project opportunities where it makes sense and do that ourselves as well.
It's a better word, a matchmaker, because it seems like some have X, some have Y, some have T, but maybe X needs the T.
Correct.
Okay, good.
And most of these, yeah, and most of these developers are, almost all of them are very well established because renewables is a very matured market. So they do bring relationships themselves as well that we could leverage potentially as well.
Okay, thank you.
I think what's important here is our role is to enable success, a successful outcome.
Right.
Our role isn't to pick winners and losers, our role isn't to compete, uh, as a winner and create losers, no. We're in the greater good game and we're trying to do that, so everything we can do.
This is all new.
Correct, and we've got a platform and capacity and organizational strength that frankly, no one else has.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's why we're incredibly well positioned to do this, so, uh, kudos, uh, Vanilla and just Justin, Adam, everybody, Joe, they're right on the whole team, I mean. Um, this is the exciting stuff and yeah, we're starting to, you know, see the benefits of this and indication of level. And I have to assume we'll continue to, to see more and the challenge will be how do we triage, how do we sequence? Uh, how do we, you know, make those critical decisions as to, you know, where we lean in and what we greenlight and when and all the rest of that, but.
Absolutely.
Draw about.
Yes, as we're thinking about it, because the next step says how do we identify specific projects? And when we got the rest plans and Carly is like, ha, victims of your own success and like, so I see in the 94 number, my heart that's keep, it's keep a beat. Because, okay, we got to evaluate all of them and do our diligence and do it within such a short timeframe. But we have a wonderful team across the organization that has been very supportive, so grateful for it all.
Yeah, just thank you, Vanilla, I can't imagine the Excel spreadsheets to get to this. And this provides a lot of flexibility in leveraging, so thank you.
Yes, right, thank you.
The obvious point of continuing conversation, yeah, go ahead, that's fine, great, thank you. Yeah, exciting stuff, no question, great to see you starting to come together.
A lot of work in a, yeah, short period of time.
What was that? Adam's up next. What do you need? I don't think we need a vote on Vanilla, do we?
Okay, this question.
That says no vote necessary.
Okay.
Did you consult with the secretary? I mean, you want to run the show here, I mean, you want to, you know, want to step in or you just want to handle your own role in the process? We do have a vote over here on the air, so let's do a really good job with this, okay? Vanilla did fine, no vote necessary.
Just asking questions.
Well, I gave you an answer, okay, so, all right. Adam, it's always a pleasure.
Yep.
We have a vote coming, so we're, no, there's a lot of anticipation, okay?
I'm ready for that.
I've got it backed for the, for the lashes.
No problem, always fun.
Okay, so let's, uh, you know, good morning trustees, fellow colleagues and members of the public. Just to give an update on where we are through April, next slide please.
Are we making any money, Adam, that's what I don't know?
Yeah, we're, we're making as much as we need to for what we need to do.
Excellent.
Uh, now, April was a, um, you know, overall a strong month in line with budget. Actually, probably a little bit better, somewhat offset by the, uh, mark to market on the securities based on interest rates going the other direction, uh, that's somewhat temporary, right? That's not a realized loss, so we hold those securities through maturity, that'll reverse itself over time. So overall, we continue to be, uh, ahead of target. None of the factors that have changed, and I talked about in the past, about generation being a little bit stronger, our hedge settlements being favorable. Transmission while a little bit behind here will show how it's going to come up and exceed the target significantly. And all the other, um, areas are in line with, uh, projections. Any questions where we are through April? If not, we can go to the end of the year forecast. Uh, so as we said that those, um, those trends will continue, uh, on the generation side, transmission you see is going from negative five to plus 25 because of, uh, factors we spoke about before, regulatory filing on cost allocation. Uh, as we get into our true up, there'll be more refining there, but overall, um, we're going to be ending up ahead of, uh, budget for transmission revenues as we forecasted today to the end of the year. Non-utility revenues are pretty much in line, uh, that's mostly timing related. Expenses will be also in line, um, some of that is, um, uh, lower than expected. Some of that has to do with the monetized funds, uh, because of energy prices being lower, but otherwise expenses are, are running pretty much in line, we've had some emergent work, I think Joe spoke about some of those. And, um, you know, that will, um, also be reflected in the expenses. And other than that, um, everything else is pretty much in line. So we are saying that we're going to end the year today, uh, ahead of our plan. Any questions there?
Nothing that you see on the horizon that provide, presents a major risk or nothing that you're anxious about at the moment, so.
Not, not for this year, no.
Okay, great.
Uh, next slide, so just keeping, uh, so this is really, so I just wanted to show, uh, for, for the trustees and, and others, uh, you know, we got to ask some questions because there were some articles in the, uh, New York Times regarding drought conditions in Canada and how they're going to be short on, on the amount of energy that they're generating because of drought. We do hear from other public power in hydro, similar, but most of that is out west. So the Canada that they're speaking about is not the Canada that we're sharing water with. Ours is Great Lakes based, it's a reservoir. And as you can see here, you know, over the last few years, we've actually had very strong water flows that resulted in generation ahead of where our 30-year, um, rolling averages. That said though, you know, our, our, our modeling and our projection, even seeing where our actuals have gone, you know, has been, um, looking at us re, reverting back to the mean over time, but still at very healthy, significant levels and in line with historical hydro flow and generation from that. But just wanted to, you know, uh, there were questions, I want to make sure people are aware that this is not an impact on, on, on NIPA at all in terms of our hydro.
And or our budgeting isn't based on some best case outcome, it's based on historic, um, averages that we've been running ahead of for quite a while.
Yes, very conservative.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Rating agency or anybody push on that or?
Yes, I mean, this was in response to some rating agency questions, they picked up the paper, picked up the phone, they called us. What does it mean for you, what does it mean for your transmission projects? What other impacts does it have? And we really, you know, spent some time kind of, uh, level setting them in terms of where the problems are and where they're not.
I assume they respond favorably to.
Very, very favorable.
The depth of knowledge and all that we have and all that, right?
Yep, and, and we've actually invited some of them to go up, uh, to see our Niagara plant, some of them taken up on us. And, uh, we, we continue to invite people like that to see how the operations work and they find it to be very valuable.
Great. Great.
Uh, next slide, just keeping in the, in, in the, uh, theme of the infrastructure and, uh, capital performance. So this is the capital plan spend to date and the forecast to the end of the year. To point out that 85 or more percent of our capital plan is for infrastructure. Things that are not would be things like vehicles, IT equipment, you know, things that are not purely would be going to that infrastructure bucket. That being said, uh, we've been running very well, um, through the first quarter in terms of the spend to plan. April, there were some shortfalls there that I think Joe hit on in his, uh, presentation regarding uh, some of the issues with smart path connect, they're the major driver in our capital plan, so they make up.
Supply chain standpoint, you're saying?
Yeah, so the, the, the under spend there was really a result of those transformers, uh, not being shipped according to when they were expected to, and as that gets worked out, so there was a little bit delay there. Some others, you know, around the edges, but mostly having to do with that and getting some of the work done. Right now, we still see it, you know, well, as. Right now, we still see it, you know, well, as Trish said, all hands on deck, and the idea here is that this project will still meet its scheduled plan as of now, based on where we see things, other than that, everything else moving according to plan. Any questions on that? And then we can go and just really briefly go through the next slides just to show that, yeah, a lot of greens there in terms of the major projects that we provide you with to show that the majority of them are all substantially hitting all their targets. The only few that are a little bit slow right now is the EV charging, but that is making up a lot of lost ground and catching up, they've been doing a great job of making up the installation and hitting those targets. And Comms' backbone we show is, is yellow based on delays it's had to date, but that's in the process of being closed out, so that'll be ending very soon, so we'll be done with that.
So were yellows trending to green, not yellows trending to red or anything?
Correct, sure, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, next slides. Same with those, nothing really to call out there. Next slide, just again, this is also in the materials about the tracking the canals projects as well. Next slide. But that concludes that, that part of it, I think we'll talk about the contingency worker.
Before I jump in, any questions, all from, you know, Adam, I know we had a good, robust discussion, a lot of that in finance, but anything else anyone has? All right, since no vote is required there, right? So, okay.
Yeah, so there was discussion finance about the contingent worker contract. We provided some memos and information and backup. As we said, this was a contract put into place in twenty-one, which means a lot of the work put together was done in nineteen and twenty, this is before Vision twenty-thirty was put in place, coming out of COVID, and also just the, the change in our business in terms of ramp up a lot of the projects. That being said, next slide please. You know, we are looking for an increase in the capacity of these contracts. It contains eleven contractors, seven of which are MWBEs, to increase that capacity by forty-five million, but that doesn't mean we are spending more money than we have otherwise budgeted for or the board has approved in either the budget, the financial plan, or any of the particular projects. This is just to meet the needs of these different projects, right, to fulfill the projects that we've already authorized and approved. Because there, there has been a growth in the number of projects since this was first contemplated. And then this will take them to the end, and in the meantime, we will be working on a new procurement for the, for the conclusion of this contract.
I think there was some good helpful clarity and fill in in the blanks from the discussion of a couple of weeks ago, so appreciate your efforts and the team's efforts to round that out. Everyone had a chance to look at those supplemental materials and feel good about that. So, uh, is there anything more? You have anything more or?
No, it's pretty much.
We're good to ask for a motion?
Yes.
In, in support of and motion to adopt the item as updated and presented by Adam. Can I have Michael second? Lori? Uh, any other questions? If not, all in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Terrific.
Okay, thank you.
Great job, well, well done as always. Jay. Uh, all right, playing off of that finance committee. That was one item that carried over from finance committee, but in finance committee itself, we did approve and recommend nine items for us as a board to formally move forward with. Quick drive-by on those nine. First is the quarterly release of up to twenty-seven million dollars in support of Canal Corporation. Second was to approve the release of up to three hundred million in funding as proposed and to be used by the organization. Balance sheet management. Third, an aggregate of eleven-point-six million, Justin referenced earlier, the DOL workforce training initiatives, including an appropriation for Sayes Buffalo. The, as those of us walked down the hill today, you came by the garage and the garage deconstruction projects. I don't know if I ever approved a whole lot of deconstruction projects, but as I looked at all the orange fence and everything else, I didn't have a desire to wander through the garage, so we are authorizing an expenditure up to twenty-eight-point-seven million for that and an additional fourteen-point-seven two-year design build construction services to Hudson, all in connection with that. And we have an increased authorization of the transformers and shut reactors value contracts totaling a hundred million dollars, which increases the total for that to over two hundred million to a handful of providers there. We've got personal services contracts, statewide canal dam safety engineering support services to a variety of firms over the next five years for a total of forty million. We've got construction contracts for on-demand infrastructure work facilities to a handful of providers over five years for up to forty-eight and a half million. Additional capital expenditures for the Astorianic Shutt Reactors Replacement Project for another fifteen million and the release of capital expenditures for a total of thirteen-point-six million for the Robert Moses Niagara Power Project Superstructure Bridge Replacement Project. If you all remember those discussions from a couple of weeks ago, unless there's any questions, I'd ask for a motion to adopt all nine of those items. Dennis moved second. Michael, thank you, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much. As we come to down the home stretch here, consent agenda, as we typically do, some meeting materials that were included there. In particular, always like to highlight or give Maribel an opportunity to focus for a few minutes on some of the highlights that otherwise are there to support the economic development across our great state. Maribel?
Yes, absolutely.
Floor is yours for a bit.
A few minutes, as, as always, I, I promise I'll be, I'll be quick, I'll be thorough, but I'll be quick. So Chairman, trustees, NIPA colleagues, thank you for this opportunity to share some of the items that are in the consent agenda. I'll highlight three, I'll start with the proceeds award to two companies. Before I go into the specifics, wanna, just a quick recap of our proceeds program that's been in effect for close to ten years. And in Western New York specifically, what we've been able to do is award approximately forty-three million dollars across multiple communities through that program. And on a year-to-year basis, depending on the energy market, we'll have either, you know, a generous addition to the funds depending on how the markets go, or there have been some years where we have zero deposits based on our net revenue. So the past two years specifically have seen some pretty generous deposits into this proceeds fund. And so in discussions with the chairman and others, Joe specifically, we've developed a strategy about how we are going to make sure that those monies get into our communities. So we've updated that strategy again, we've hired a, hired a new full-time person, Angela Rossi out of Western New York. We have adjusted our strategy to double down on internal partnerships with environmental justice, with innovation and with external affairs, a conversation we were having yesterday, but also externally with other entities that may have a direct pipeline, like such as banks, where entities will go and request credit lines, and they may not meet their qualifications, but they may be, you know, perfect candidates for our program. And so kudos to the team in Western New York for making sure that they open up those relationships and really expand the pipeline there to try to make sure that we get, you know, distribute these funds into the public. And so we, we are on track for seeing our highest level of awards in twenty-twenty-four, so very proud of that activity as well.
Yep.
So the two companies that are getting an award, Feed More in Western New York, a fantastic nonprofit. Some of the monies will be used to construct a new facility there, which will include office space, a warehouse. They are going to provide food bank services and host other programs related to nutritional education, fresh produce access and workforce development training. So twenty-five jobs, twenty-five new jobs committed through that award. And then the second award is for Great Cliff Conservancy. This is really on the tourism track for this nonprofit, the development of four, of a forty-four-hundred-square-foot facility that really is going to add new amenities and just be more accessible to members of the community there. The second highlight is for Brookhaven National Laboratory. I always say the best compliment we can get is a repeat customer, someone who wants to extend their contract or renew their contract with us, and that's the position that we get to be in with Brookhaven National Labs. Their contract will expire in February of next year, so what we are doing is requesting for the notice of public hearing so that we can begin that extension process. Outside of just providing them power, I want to say since November of last year, NIPA has really doubled down its partnership with Brookhaven National Lab. Daniela Piper-Eve and our business development team have really met with them and engaged with them on much more strategic initiatives. They have really aggressive projects that will increase their power needs from fifty-five megawatts to over a hundred and twenty megawatts by twenty-thirty. So lots of opportunity to really support them. Vanilla's also been part of conversations with them of how we can engage with them on, on renewable power, environmental justice, Kyla has also been part of the conversations to see how we can bring some of our P-Tech interns into their, into their workforce. And we're just really excited about, you know, what the next couple of years is going to bring with them. The last highlight is about our recharge New York compliance process. And so it is part of our contractual obligations that we engage with our customers once a year and obtain their latest job commitments, capital investment in their facilities, and also their power utilization. And so, you know, it's been said that since COVID, the power authority works very closely with our customers. We issued a halt on compliance for a few years. We also extended the additional hydropower for their use to try to get them through this harsh time. Last year was an effort to really reset with them and understand where their current operations were going to, to land, what their current job, you know, their hiring levels were. This year, we are resuming full administration, and so we have about twenty to twenty-two customers that will see hydropower allocation reductions. This is not a surprise for customers, we've been working with them for the entire year, obtaining business cases, understanding where they are. Some customers you'll see in, in the materials have a recommend of no action, which means no power taken back because since they reported, they've come back to us months later showing us how they have been able to rehire some of the workforce that they were supposed to hire. So when it comes to noncompliance, most, most of the deficits are in the, the job, job commitment area. When it comes to the utilization of the hydropower, some customers did decrease their operations, which means they don't need it, so we will take that power back and put it back into the precious pool that we have. And so overall, we're seeing a reduction of about three-point-four megawatts of power. So where we have eighteen-hundred megawatts of power, we're only taking back three-point-four. And when you look at the job reductions, right, because when we take back the power, that'll reset the, the number of jobs, that's a reduction of about three thousand jobs in terms of our overall, which currently to date we're at about four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, of four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand jobs created or retained. Thank you, thank you for reading the materials. With that, I'll end there, I'll end there. Any questions?
So three thousand is a bit of an eye-popping number, but you're saying it's less than one percent of the total that we're supporting, it's more a reflection of just the reality of today's economy and the challenge slash opportunity we have to continue to provide the economic support for expanded development.
Yes.
So I think the key message, part of the push in Western New York that you started with is our doors are open, we're here to help.
Yes.
And I think that's just the message that we want to continue to reinforce with all of our programs, right? That we, we have resources that can enable and support other success, so please talk to us and we appreciate your leadership and support there.
Thank you everyone for your support.
Could I just, so it's interesting that you're working with banks, but in the communities of color and in underserved communities, credit unions do that same job and sometimes do it better than banks. So you might want to think about reaching out to credit unions in the area as well.
Perfect, thank you for that suggestion, thank you.
And the key point is that the banks aren't working with those, those people, so we want to step into those shoes and, you know, leverage and enable the success because they aren't deemed creditworthy or bankable, and we can otherwise support and enable that, so, okay?
True, thank you.
Unless there's any other questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Dennis, thank you, a second. Michael, thank you very much, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, our last item before we close. Goodbyes are never any fun. We talked last meeting, I think, about the fact that Angela Gonzalez, our audit leader, is stepping down and stepping away to further pursue the next chapter in, in her life. But while we offered informal words of thanks and praise last time around, we wanted to do that in a little more formal and official way this time. So with that, I'm pleased to pass the baton back to Justin, our CEO, Dennis Traynor, our Audit Committee Chair.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, yeah, we, we spoke about this at the Audit Committee meeting last time audit was together.
Okay, that's when it was.
And Angela announced her plans to retire. You know, she's, she's just been fabulous in the role. She's provided exemplary service to the authority and to the Canal Corporation. I started working with her when I was general counsel, so I saw her take on the role. I, I was with her on her first day in the role, so I kind of feel like I've been along the journey with her, and I've seen her really grow and step up and done a tremendous job, and, and she's built a tremendous team. So she leaves us in very good stead here. She's been excellent in recruiting top talent, and, and that's not easy as we've talked about in the internal audit space. But I just want to thank her on behalf of executive management for her service. We wish her the best of luck in her retirement, we're going to miss her here, but and I know we have a resolution, but before that, maybe see if anyone else wants to provide comments.
Yeah, I'd like to, so Angela, I want to thank you first for taking me under your wing. When I first took over the chair from the judge, you brought me up to speed on everything and you kept me up to speed, and you always were there answering all my questions, as silly as they may have been. And I really appreciate that, and on behalf of the, the committee, we want to thank you for everything you have done for the Audit Committee and for NIPA, so enjoy your retirement.
Yeah, I would certainly echo that on behalf of the entire board. Yeah, I've witnessed the pre-Angela days and I've witnessed the Angela days, and has, has been referenced, we're in a much better place. You're leaving us much better than you found us or we found you, however one wants to look at it. And for that, we're incredibly indebted and appreciative. And hopefully you're justly proud of what you and your team have accomplished and how you've further enabled the organization to thrive and grow and, you know, do so in a prudent and well-managed fashion. So thank you very, very much and all the best in, in the years ahead.
I just want to say, I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to be the chief audit executive for NIPA and to, and to serve the state as well. I do feel the team is, and my, the organization is in a much better place and will, and will move on and continue on and do well for the organization, and I will miss all of you, and hopefully we've.
continue on and do well for the organization and I will miss all of you and hopefully we'll keep in contact like I said this is not goodbye this is see you later to me and thanks so much for everything it's been a privilege and an honor.
Well thank you again and why don't you come on up and we can is this a photo op moment? Do you have the staff photographer where are we?
Somebody can use their phone.
Angela Justin Dennis board everyone whatever Angela.
Sometimes I miss her.
Maybe look at Sheila first.
Yeah while you're still genuinely laughing.
Yeah.
Wonderful thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always an indication of what you've done when you can't even imagine.
Right?
Sure.
Oh.
You have been there that's fine.
Steph Steph Steph.
All right. To Sheila first.
It's we're gonna propose everyone in a slightly.
Got it.
And then over to this side of the room. Like the shortest person. I know too much as old as I normally am.
Oh good.
Yeah. Wonderful.
All right and unless there's any other matters to come. Lori.
So some of us have had some adventures recently with the canals and NIPA so I just want to take 30 seconds as everyone's getting ready for the summer to say check out all of our visitor centers on Saturday we went to Blenheim-Gilboa and they had a teddy bear picnic we'd never really heard of something of this nature but apparently it's very popular in Australia and Danielle who works at the BG site you know came up with the idea it's the second year and it was just phenomenal so Mr. Teddy Bear is with me today the children allowed it he has his little NIPA badge but in all honesty the amount of time and dedication the staff did and just the encouragement to use our visitor center for the community was just outstanding and so to everyone I'm gonna know I'm gonna miss names but Danielle to Tara Jess Jenny Stephanie Joel everyone at BG thank you for opening the community and you know to everyone out there like please go check out our visitor centers they're just phenomenal so thank you they are. Mr. Teddy thank you.
Thank you for the support and the participation and the wonderful endorsement as well so.
Well and that was the day after the opening of the canal that the three of us got to go to lock two in Waterford which was really an experience and everybody there just loves the canals just loved that there was a lot of positivity and I'm glad we could be part of it.
And getting to meet our own customers from across the country that were just anxious to get through that canal to get where they were going that was really a lot of fun and then my husband and I took Route 5 and stopped at every lock on the way home it took six hours but it was.
Well thank you for that lock inspection.
Yeah.
She also noted check that we're covered for the month. All right unless there's any other matters to come before us I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right Dennis second Lori thank you very much all in favor aye any opposed motion carried thank you one and all we're back together in a couple months notes say July 30th all right have a great Memorial Day weekend it's hard to believe it's upon us enjoy the holidays stay safe in fact have a great 4th of July weekend since we won't see you for a couple months but have a great start to the beginning of summer thanks for everything.
July 30th?